I would like to reconvene the board meeting for U46 at 7:40 this evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I apologize for the delay, but we're here nevertheless and we want to do the important work of which we're on the agenda to present tonight. In order to -- I'm going to forego some of the typical formalities where we read the mission statements of EHS and CTE and go right into visitors to be heard. Do we have any visitors in the audience? I know we have visitors in the audience tonight for the presentations, but something that's not on the formal agenda. If not, good, we'll carry on and we'll talk about the EHS student achievement and Kneecap results and principal written. I'll turn it over to you to kind of manage how we want to present this information this evening.
I think folks are ready to roll and Amy's going to spearhead the presentation and folks will chime in and there'll be an opportunity for questions, obviously, for the board and feedback and I say we just begin. Amy?
You have two sets of reports in front of you. One is related to your most recent Kneecap data and the second is a report written by your curriculum content leaders. Your curriculum content leaders, we have nine curriculum content leaders, most of whom are here tonight, so I'm just going to ask if they would introduce themselves.
Hi, everyone. My name's Colleen Burner and I'm the curriculum content leader for Spanish -- uh, more languages.
Emily Davis, curriculum content leader for physical education and health.
Joshua Polly for supporting arts.
Justin Norris, mathematics.
Kelly Taylor, had to leave, she's our science curriculum content leader, but Joe Chase.
Pinch hitter.
It's being modest, who's the learning community leader. And Erica?
And I am your high school literacy coach, Erica Leclerc.
And Jill will be presenting later, but Jill, why don't you introduce yourself?
Jill Prado, languages teacher.
Great. So, Justin, come on up because we're doing math. You've received this information in advance. I also put an extra copy in front of you. Sometimes these graphs are a little bit difficult to read, so I put the color copy in front of you. Tonight, you're going to receive some data and I just want to give you a quick context. It's not a typo when you see that it's the 2011-2012 data. If you look at the state data, sometimes you'll see it in different forms, so I just want to take a minute and clarify. Our grade level expectations assess our students in the fall for reading, writing, and math for the previous year's standards. So, when you see them reported on the state as 2011-2012 data points, they're speaking to the fact that the students would have learned those during that year, then tested in the fall, and we received the results in February. So, if you see three different years for the same set of data, it's because very often we use titles differently. So, the results that you're going to look at here will be reading, writing, and math for our current juniors, so they were assessed in the fall, we received the results in February. Our science results are our current seniors because they were assessed in the spring. Does that make sense? So, as you look at this and you see the graphs next to each other, please keep in mind that when you look at reading, writing, and math, those are the same students. When you look at science, it's a different cohort of students. The data that you're going to see today for all of these content areas will be school compared to district and state, or I should say, school compared to state, school over time, and then we have some achievement gap subgroup analysis at the end of the presentation. We'll just go through it and then you let us know if you have any questions. We understand we have about an hour, but I know that you're running a little bit late. If you have more detailed questions about particular data points that you're interested in, I spoke with Jack about the fact that we can record, whatever we can answer tonight, we'd be happy to, but we're happy also to record other questions and then bring back future data points for you. Okay? So, first, your overview is your all-subjects, so this is this year, the data that we received this year. So, as you can see for reading, you'll see three different colors. The first one is your proficient -- I'm tired, too. Proficient with distinction. You're proficient, you're partially proficient, and you're substantially below. One of the first things that strikes me as I look at the reading is the large number of students that are in that higher level of proficiency up here at the high school, and we'll go over trends in just a bit. Math, you'll see, writing, and science, and I'm not going to go into detail because Justin's going to explain a little bit more about math, and Erica will come up for literacy and Joe will come up for science.
So, if you combine the proficient with distinction and the proficient categories, this year, we scored 61 percent of our students at EHS scored at proficient or above. That was up from last year significantly, and overall, that ended up being the third highest in the state this year. We also, that top category, the blue bar there, the proficient with distinction, that also, we had the third in the state as far as top students demonstrating proficiency with distinction. And for our pre-reduced lunch population, they scored 40 percent at the proficient or above, which ended up actually being second in the state.
Here's the trend over time. As you can see, last year, we were here talking about a dip in a single year.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I was just going to say, last year, it looks like a little bit lower than, you know, four out of the last five years. Looks like we're kind of back up to where we've been for the last five years. I would say, again, the outlier being last, the previous years, the rest of them pretty consistent. And last year was the highest we had for the kind of category four there, proficient with distinction.
So, I asked Justin just to listen a little bit about the projects that they've been working on in the math department and share them with you.
So, as you know, we're kind of at the beginning of this transition to our Common Core state standards, and there's a lot of work being done as to trying to transition our curriculum and our classes to those standards. And so, we, this current school year, we're focusing on Algebra I. Myself and a few of our colleagues have done some work, meeting with some of our sending schools, ADL EMS in particular, trying to coordinate that transition for incoming students, especially the ones that are going to see Algebra either with us or with them, hoping that it's a fairly common experience throughout. And so, we're doing a lot of work, kind of reworking our Algebra I curriculum. We've also developed some other models, some co-teaching models for some of our classes that are pre-Algebra classes and some of the classes below Algebra I. And as well as the Algebra Lab, which you've been hearing about for a few years, our Algebra I lab is still continuing and is going quite well for those students. So, that's some of the stuff that we've started working on, and this summer, we're going to get a head start on the continued transition, starting with a geometry class.
Any questions about the math data or about any of the things that Justin shared?
Just a quick question. Again, I understand that testing is just these snapshots, obviously, but what do you think, I mean, what do you think, you said it was an anomaly in 2011. I mean, is there anything that was being different, done differently in 2010 that was 2009, 2012, or was it truly just a statistical anomaly?
Yeah, I don't think there was anything done in our practice that would have led to those scores. I think it was just that class anomaly.
And you'll hear a little bit from Erica in terms of our trends for our reading and writing scores. We do know that there is a connection between how our students perform on the reading and writing Kneecap and how they perform in science and math. This year, it was actually a one-for-one. Students who were not proficient in writing on Kneecap did not pass the math test. And so, that's something that we need to look at quite seriously, whether or not kids can access and show their proficiency on these assessments. And now, we're shifting to a new assessment, which is S-Back, which will have that added complexity of computer reading.
I sometimes get confused, and this is the one where is the line, is the bar of proficiency standard throughout all these five years?
The same? Yes. It is different at the different grade levels, though. So, a student who is an eighth grade, for example, so the student who takes a test in eighth grade and scores proficient, the level of proficiency for the eighth grade test is different than the level of proficiency for the 11th grade test. So, the 11th grade test, it's been standard, the same every five years, and the eighth grade has been the same, but they're not the same together.
Did you mean the cut score?
The cut, I think. The difference between the two or the three?
The scale score is 40 for every content area, for every grade level. That's consistent. What is not consistent is the difference between proficient with distinction, that number is different from year to year, from content area to content area, and the cut score between substantially below and partially. But this, we were grateful that they kept scoring consistent for every content area every year.
Okay.
That's interesting because very often, we look at the students who receive, now the first number you'll see will be the grade level, so it will be a scale score of like 1138. So, what caused so many students getting 1138, what kept them from those two points? And very often, what we find is it's something, just that little bit more on a particular task.
Any other questions or comments, I guess, about math or future questions that you have about your math data? I realize it's late and this is a little late.
Just a quick question, Rob, and I think it's for you. With respect to our ninth grade core and our math initiatives, starting there, at what point, at what point did we start the ninth grade core that we'll see them in our 11th grade Kneecap results? Am I making myself clear? If we start a ninth grade core in the fall of 2010, we would expect, they're freshmen in 2010, sophomores 2011, juniors in 2012, which is when they would take the kneecaps. So, we would see math 2012 scores there. I'm just trying to-
But math wasn't part of the core.
Well, yeah, I was just going to say, the difference is with math, we have various entry points.
Right. That's understanding.
So, it's not quite as cut and dry, if you will, as compared to English social studies.
Right.
And science, for that matter, where we have a ninth grade course, even though they're not teamed with common teachers, but at least there's a consistent entry point for the science curriculum.
When understanding that there are different entry points for math.
Yes. And also, I want to point out that the board has funded the lab sections for the Algebra I Bs and also looking at some geometry B labs. And the data from the Algebra I labs, the year we had it, two years ago, not taking into account the comprehensive Algebra we had last year, the data was very positive and I believe, not speaking for Justin, that the preliminary results from the first semester this year is encouraging as well.
Yeah, I would just like, you know, again, thank the, kind of reiterate what Rob said, thank the board for their continued support for the extra time in math at the Algebra I level, some of those sections. It has shown, the data has shown that, you know, there has been an improvement for students there, and just all the work that we're starting to do in this transition to Common Core, we're really seeing a ramp up, a step up in what is being asked of these students. And so, you know, even at the, if you look at the state initiative where, you know, people have said, "We want everybody to get through," for example, in Algebra II, that Algebra II course is not the same Algebra II course that I took in high school, that probably most of, you know, you guys took in high school. It's really different. And with the standards that we're seeing, there's a bigger emphasis on what they're calling modeling and mathematics and being able to take a look at the problems in a context, real-world context, and really some in-depth problem solving. And that stuff, the nice thing about that is, is for a lot of students, that probably gives them a context to better understand the mathematics. The downside to being able to do a lot of that stuff is it takes time, and it takes a lot of time for students to really grasp those concepts and be able to do some of that in-depth problem solving. So, what we've seen at Algebra I, the extra time for some of those students, we're going to be taking a look, but it may necessitate, you know, what are our priorities and do we need extra time for some of these students in geometry and so forth?
Along that line, one of the things I've noticed just recently, inner-city schools are extending their school day. Is that going to, I know that it has to help if we could do that.
I think, I don't know exactly how that works as far as schedule goes and extending school days and things, but I do know that when, you know, does a greater proportion of time within a school day need to be, you know, designated for math or science or those kinds of things, but to really do a good job through this problem solving and the modeling that they want to see, it's going to take time.
Practice.
Yeah, it's going to take time.
And what the labs have done is it's made learning the constant time the variable instead of forcing every kid to learn at the same pace and the same time, which is not feasible.
Right.
And we're seeing greater achievement by the students, which is really positive.
And I just want to acknowledge the math teachers and the amount of work that they've done in the last two years in revising and evaluating and revising again the program, the amount of time that they've spent in the summer, working together with their co-teachers, and this year, just thrown into Common Core and the amount of work that they've put in outside the day has been pretty tremendous.
This year's senior class, there's 81 percent that are accessing at least Algebra II their senior year, so that's pretty, I think, positive statistic, and it's trended slightly higher over the last five to six years, from 70 to 76 to 81, and that's, that's where we want to keep going.
Sure.
Correct.
Yep. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Erica, come on down. So, writing has been a difficult one for us, and it's been a difficult one, I think, statewide, and it's been difficult at the K8 level. The writing Kneecap has been just one of those, it's just been a challenge to try to figure out how to get those scores up. And I think Erica is going to speak with you about the work that she's done through your generous support in creating the EHS literacy coach position with all of the content area teachers, not only to look at what we're currently responsible for and to look at that data, but to look at the shift to Common Core.
So, we're just going to speak to writing? Is that where we are?
Writing and then we have reading.
Okay. Didn't think I was going to be on stage for the third time today. So, I started out my morning at Fleming for three and a half hours with folks on literacy Common Core and again, the faculty meeting, and here I am. So, bear with me. So, we have, we look at these scores and we certainly see that they remain fairly constant. And so, moving forward for next year, for the in-house work that we've done is really deconstructing literacy Common Core in terms of writing. It's the first time that a national set of standards really equalizes writing to reading and pushes writing cross-content areas. So, really engaging colleagues in discussions around, you know, what writing like a historian versus writing like a scientist versus writing like a mathematician is really about, and really engaging faculty in those discussions to get those teachers more comfortable with assessing not only content through writing, but the actual, you know, structure of writing and the content of writing. So, that's a lot of the PD work around Common Core. In terms of other work that we've done, we're looking at the creation of a school-wide writing rubric. So, again, cross-content areas, we can be using the same language with students. So, again, they're getting the same message in their English literature classes, their composition classes, but again, cross-content areas. Along with what Justin is saying, Common Core is rigorous, and it's pushing those standards across content areas, and there's work to be done, just in terms of looking at writing together, calibrating writing, really thinking about the assessment of writing and building a sense of comfort and culture and common language around that. So, we are developing that common rubric. It's in draft form. It's going to need to be used, which fuels, and is part of our literacy plan for next year and some of the work that we hope to do around full faculty and writing and calibration before we're ready to really move forward and create some local assessments. So, beyond just standardized tests, we can gauge locally how our students are making progress in writing. And again, writing in all content areas, not in just English.
So, and we're going to move on to reading in just a second, but some of what we've discussed is whether it's Kneecap or whether it's Smarter Bounce Assessment Consortium, we're not happy with just having a state assessment for writing, that we want to build up a local assessment so that we can have better data points to look at for our students over time around writing. So, that's some of the work that Erica will be leading next year.
When you say local, is that school-based, is that more state-based, is it, would it just be?
Well, there's a variety of different ways we can do it. We can look at purchasing standardized, but we also know that a lot of school districts have been very successful in simply building their own. If we can come up with a common rubric and we have a group of, Josh is sitting on it, we have cross-content area people building rubrics right now, come to some agreement around common language, do a common prompt for kids, and then pull it in and have faculty assess it, it's an easy way for us to learn about our students as writers, to learn a little bit more about ourselves, about whether or not you think a four is the same thing as I think a four is. So, those are relatively simple to implement and have huge payoffs. It's difficult to do without a position like Erica's to be able to manage it and get the data back to us. We'll go quickly through reading and then we'll let you, I guess, talk a little bit more about some of the things that you're going to do.
Okay. So, as you look here, our reading scores do, as it says in our notes, continue to hold steady in the upper 80s. We're seeing a trend with increasing percent of student proficient on eighth-grade kneecaps, our current, this is current ninth and 10th grade. We do know that we're responding not only, again, to a new set of standards and an increase in rigor in terms of what it is Common Core wants all students to be able to access and to read, so it's not really about leveling text, it's really about exposing all kids to, you know, rigorous content and figuring out how to scaffold. So, that's a learning process for a lot of us in terms of staff. So, in, you know, trying to help to facilitate the cultivation of strategic readers, kids who can engage in scientific texts and historic texts and mathematical textbooks and rigorous, you know, literature, helping teachers access tools and strategies is really something that I've been focusing on. So, we're also responding to a shift in our demographic. We have, you know, what, 40? What's our, what's our?
Our ELL numbers are going out, but it's district-wide primarily Nepali-speaking at this point.
So, we are seeing students who are needing some support with that and also teachers. So, I've been working with our ELL teacher, I've been developing a literacy, a CCSU literacy toolbox, which you can probably access through your email, just a host of resources, articles, S-Back release prompts. So, again, just trying to have a place where teachers can access information and therefore access me. So, in trying to, again, help teachers transition to both reading and writing Common Core as well as speaking and listening and language, I've met with a lot of individual teachers on an individual basis, so putting into some of the stuff that I've been doing in PD into practice and helping teachers create their own authentic tools has been a really rewarding opportunity. I've worked with health teachers developing scaffolding for ninth-grade writing assignments. I've worked with science teachers, being exposed to, you know, what pre-calc physics writing looks like and looking at it through a literacy lens and helping to facilitate some conversation about creating scientific rubrics. I've worked with foreign language teachers, they've been transforming some of our writing rubrics and some of our work into Spanish. And again, the literacy toolbox creates that share center, so I'm beginning to see, you know, teachers are sending me tools that we're using in-house based on what we're learning and sharing, so hopefully, that can be a little bit more contagious.
I just, I just want to clarify the second bullet here, you don't have in front of you, but I've shared with the K8 principals and we've looked at it as an ELT and I've shared with the K8 boards. What I've done is I've looked at their trends over time and this coming, this current ninth grade class, our feeder schools, our three major feeder schools sent us 90 percent students passing a reading Kneecap, which was tremendous. This year, our ADL class, 94 percent passed the reading Kneecap. So, we're getting stronger, students coming up, and we're shifting standards now, which will require much more complex text. So, we're feeling like we're in a good position to do this, but we're not quite sure how that's going to translate on our next level of assessments.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Just out of curiosity, what was that similar trend that you saw in the writing? You mentioned that bullet that you added, starting with reading trends coming up. I'm just wondering what you were seeing with the writing.
We're not moving. And the state has-
I mean, kids just don't, they don't write anymore.
Yeah, and the state hasn't been moving on the writing. That's been a really difficult one for us to grapple with, which is, which again begs, we need more data about how our students are doing. So, I think, Erica, you may have covered everything over here, but are there any questions for me or for Erica about your reading or writing assessment results?
I'm sure my comments will be out.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Good.
And Joe's up next. Okay, so again, I'll remind you, this is a different cohort of students. So, this is your current senior class. These were the students that you would have looked at the reading, writing, and math scores for last year, and that's some of what we've been trying to figure out, what's the correlation between those?
Good evening. And again, thanks for inviting us to come and talk about our kids. It's always a lot of fun. So, taking a look at the total proficient and above Essex High School, 49 percent, again, one of the leaders in the county, but down significantly, and I think the next slide is the trends over time. Excuse me. This is fun because I've had the opportunity to be here a couple of times to talk to the board about what we've seen with Kneecap scores over time. Going way back to 2008, we saw a big jump in the Kneecap scores because that was the first time that our students had been exposed to a different ninth-grade curriculum, which we designed in response to gaps that we saw. And so, it was excellent to see that reaction, which really left us with a big conclusion about, you know, what do you do with these scores that don't actually track the same cohort over time? And how does it help when you, you know, actually look at your curriculum alignment? And we've been trying to since that time, trying to, I don't know, break the glass or whatever is that ceiling that keeps us from moving forward, but you're hearing similar reports from other areas about, it seems like there's something that's keeping us from moving forward, but I think that we have a really interesting answer and to propose to you tonight. We have a dip from 55 percent down to 49 percent, which this cohort is actually the same group that saw a drop in their math scores because they take their math in the fall and then they do science in the spring, so there's a sort of lag in reporting about that particular cohort. But I think the next slide is really interesting. I have to tell you a quick story first before we get into it because this is one of the situations that we found. So, last year, we gave the Kneecap in just a single set, it was a one-day sit-down where in previous years, they've broken it up over two days. There were a lot of things happening. May is absolutely the worst time to give an assessment of this kind. The students are just coming off of a bunch of AP exams, and in fact, we didn't have any choice about this. We had to give the science Kneecap on the same day as the AP literature and language exam. And so, we actually sent a bus. The AP exams are given over at, over on-
Six Alliance.
Six Alliance, sure. Thanks. So, we sent a bus over to pick up these students. We gave them the option, they could either take it on the day of their AP exam, there were 71 students altogether we're talking about, so this is a big chunk of students. And so, we gave them the option, we'll send you a bus and then bring you back and then you can take your Kneecap, or you could take it on the makeup day, but of course, if they took it on the makeup day, then we're going to have to miss some class time, too. So, these students, being the kind of students that they are, said, "No, we don't want to miss any class time, so we'll come over and take the bus." For the most part, that was the case. And then, so when we first saw these scores being down by six percentage points, we were going, "Wow, I wonder if it was those kids." You know, they're kind of burned out and they've been doing writing all day, and especially the inquiry task is a lot of writing. So, we pulled them out and this is what we saw. We wanted to see if those AP language and composition students scored worse, like how did they actually do with respect to the rest of the students? So, the dark blue, the navy, are those students who took the AP exam, and the light blue students are those who didn't.
So, the dark blue would represent the kiddos who sat for a day of testing versus their peers who didn't.
And they still killed it. Still. So, so that's a really interesting thing to walk away from, thinking about, the correlation. So, this is, well, it started off as something that we're worried about, actually provides rock-solid correlation about the need for writing and an emphasis on writing and being successful on a test like this. So, this is really profound work and it's so awesome to have a literacy coach to go to because we've been, I think, for the, in our new leadership structure, we've been spending a lot more time working together across content areas. And that's really, I think, when we look at those really flat scores, in the past, what we've been doing is just focusing on our own content rates and not really seeing how we could put that package as something that's more cohesive for students. So, for example, Erica referenced a point where, just in my physics class, where I give them one formal writing piece every quarter, for the first time, I could actually give this to a literacy coach and talk to her about the assessment of this writing piece. And even though it seems kind of daunting that we have these three sets of new standards coming out, the fact that we're poised in a situation to work together across content areas is great news and provides a really good potential for us to move forward on addressing these. Even when we take a look at the next-gen science standards, that the reference, the cross-cutting references to what students need to be doing in their writing is really profound and matches up very, very well with what Common Core says. So, I think that we're really optimistic about what we're able to do moving forward. There are a couple of other things that have been happening. So, our first look at the next-gen science standards, we're in draft mode, but hopefully, they're getting pretty close to what the final version's going to be. And there's definitely more, there's a lot more writing, but we're really, we're really excited about this because in all the things that we need to face, we really have to spend more time working together across content areas. And a couple of other interesting things as we're taking a look at some projects that are coming up, it's been really great to have Kelly Hill be part of the work group, going to Montpelier and participating in the review of the next-gen science standards. She's really- She's really given an excellent insight view about what's in store. And then our enrollments in science has continued to surge. We have, we offer two new electives, marine biology and organic chemistry. And they, they both have signups that way outpace our capacity, but we'll still be able to offer them up for students. And so we're very excited about that.
Questions or comments for Joe? So just a quick subgroup analysis, because we like to look at how we're doing on our all-students, but also subgroup. And as you know, No Child Left Behind holds us accountable for those with the N counts that are large enough for us to look at. Gender is not one that No Child Left Behind asked us to look at, but I thought I'd produce it for you anyway. So if we look at our students for free and reduced lunch, and this is again, just a single year. Remember again, the first three, reading, writing, and math, will be your current juniors and then science will be your current seniors. So what I've circled is the percent of students who are on free and reduced lunch who met proficiency. And that's the number that we keep an eye on as a trend over time. And we also look at how we do against other schools to see if there are particular programs or approaches that we're doing that may be supporting these. And we're doing quite well on a state average. Students with disabilities, this one's a little bit harder to track because it's a single grade, so a single cohort grade. Say, for example, your junior class may have fifty students with disabilities one year. It may have twenty-nine another year. So to track it from year to year is much more challenging. And because it's a smaller end size, you're going to see some big up and downs over time. But we looked at how are we serving our students for reading, writing, math, and science with students with disabilities. This cohort is clumped together, so we can't identify what those disabilities are. They could be language-based, they could be math-based. I mean, I could go a little bit deeper, but for this cohort, you can see that figure. And what we do is we'll work with Barbara Highland and Erin McGuire to look at those trends over time. In particular, I know Erin and Barbara have been focusing on graduation rates for students with disabilities. And then gender. It's always interesting to look at whether or not some of the, you know, thematic stereotypes come true at all or whether or not we're, you know, how our student, how our math, our males are doing in writing and how our girls are doing in science. And so far, it's, you know, in terms of a trend, it's not showing us anything significant. Obviously, this cohort, we had a higher group that performed well on writing that were female over male. But then you look for science and, you know, not too far off. In fact, the females outpaced the males this year. But as we look over time, there wasn't anything particularly significant in the trends around gender that we found useful. You can see at the bottom, too, I did put the state averages if you need, want to look at the disparity. And again, this is a single year. If you want to look a little bit more closely at trends over time, I can get that for you. So any questions or comments? And I know it's late. Oh, I always feel like I'm standing in front of you at a little o'clock at night, pounding you with data.
Just had a couple of comments. I like local rather than state results because I went back and did all the pull-down MMU, South Burlington, and other schools and compared their results to our results. And basically, all of these school districts originally are not, maybe not always exceeding DHS. But all these schools are really trying very hard to improve their scores, their students. And that's really clear. So we may be top two in one case and three in another, but they all have their individual strengths and weaknesses. We talked about barriers, what Joe did, somebody did. Some of the barriers I see when I look at this data, and, you know, I'm not a professional educator, but I'm just looking at the numbers, have to do with a poverty level in this district that's approaching twenty-two percent. I don't think we can ignore that. Another thing is that there are environmental changes that are moving towards us. We're trying to be more inclined towards differentiated instruction, providing more in-depth to individual students. And I'm not sure we have the infrastructure to support teachers in being more effective in that. I read some of the verbiage about that, but it seems like the systems and availability information to help students may be more manual and just knowing the student than it is a sort of automated approach, something that supports your needs a little better. The, I think the last point I wanted to make is, I have a personal belief that strong schools supports strong communities and regions. And so I would like to ask all of you, if you had the power to change anything to make a difference in enabling students to become more proficient? Because world knows, it's getting very competitive out there and I don't see this going away anytime soon. Do you have any suggestions for the board in looking, not only short-term, but longer-term for how you could be more effective in accomplishing those tasks? That's what I'd like to hear about on a more regular basis, is are we on track? Should we be considering different things? Everything's, for me, everything's on the table. I can't, you know, I think we just have to take a hard look because the environment's going to stay, change with the state, with the students we take. I'm very proud of the school system. So your input is highly valued. Any thoughts? I put you on the- Sure, go ahead.
Tell him to stand up. I'm calling burner again, world language. One of the things that as a curriculum, as curriculum leaders that we've talked a lot about is the concept of pathways and starting to think about how can we allow students to have a more personal learning experience at EHS. Presentation today on advisory and call it advisory, call it one-to-one, but where students have another adult in the building besides teachers that they know is in support of their learning and how that may connect eventually to helping students make their experience here more relevant, become more aware of the connections among their different courses, be focused on, I guess, not only what the content is, but the skills that are the same kinds of skills that they can experience throughout different content areas and help be more deliberate about those connections. So that's one thing that, you know, as a curriculum leader, I would really like to see us engaging in conversations around those pathways, around those connections among our different disciplines, moving students forward. And, you know, that said, what do we need for it? I think the time is always something that I'm interested in looking at, how we can think about our school day a little bit differently, what that could mean for teachers and students to be able to help students get what they need, especially those who have jobs and other commitments in their lives. Anybody else want to jump in on any of those things? I'm doing okay. Okay, and I'm just thinking. Any feedbacks?
Yeah, again, I was really interested to watch a room full of educators talking about, about how to talk to kids in a different way. We frequently have that conversation about who's talking to our kids about their education on a broad sense? Who's talking to kids about their, the opportunities that the school presents from a variety of different viewpoints? And in this way, as we're trying to provide the faculty with a way to weigh in about the structure that they can provide that opportunity, thirty minutes every day to have something that's not just, no offense, algebra, algebra, algebra. Or from my point of view, physics, physics, physics. But where are those opportunities to have a conversation with kids about their pathway? How does our education suit their pathway in the rest of whether it's academic or career? And so we're fortunate to be able to have those conversations. But I think the real key factor is to be able to get to know, or at least for students to now have one adult in the building that knows them well and also knows the building well, so that they can help plug them in, not only with, hey, have you heard about the robotics club? Or, hey, what kind of, you know, you're thinking about school X. Have you thought about the things that go into, into getting into that school? Now, that might sound like a school counselor's job a little bit, but we all know what the, what the caseloads for the school counselors are. And we're not really talking about school counseling either. We're just talking about an adult having a conversation with a kid about how school relates to their life. So, so I don't know, we're really excited about that. And also the fact that kids don't have to fall so far through the cracks that before, so our excellent support services start grabbing them, but that you can identify them earlier on.
I just want to, Joe, I appreciate your comment. And it's interesting when you talk about how trying to establish that mentor-protege relationship on how school relates to life. I almost would say in some of our cases, how life relates to our school. And I think particularly in our writing, in our, in our, our writing and our reading metrics, when culture is dictating now, everything's in one hundred and thirty-two-character tweets and texts. And the fact that newspapers and published magazines are falling by the wayside and there's more online digital delivery and things are quick and fast. And the ability for our students to sit down and actually, and I see this in work environments, craft a written paragraph that a sentence has a noun and a verb and correct punctuation and, and not, is, is these cultural influences on how our students perform is an important characteristic, too. And that, so my point is, it's, there's, there's a lot of room for communicating and improving that dialogue. And I fully support those kinds of relationships that we can cultivate to students to make them more productive citizens.
You do have a written update, and I know that you have a lot of materials in your org notes, but I wanted to make sure you heard from, from Erica in writing, from CCLs as a group, but also from each of the curriculum content leaders because I knew they wouldn't be here today. I don't know if you have any questions about anything that was written here and certainly if you do, and something occurs to you later and you want to ask them later on, tap it up on something else.
I just want to, Amy, relate-
A few of them are here.
Yes, relate the conversation that you and I had with Dr. DeWes, but in the presence of our LCLs and CCLs and board members on, on the, looking at this data, kind of our cohort of CCSU students over time. You know, my concern as a U forty-six high school board member is, are, for example, I'll just take writing. And we see what our proficient with distinction and proficient students are as eleventh graders. And we have some data on how those students performed as eighth graders if they were within this district, right? So are we seeing, are we seeing trends over time? The scatter, the scatter plot data that we've talked about, are we seeing situations where eighth graders who take the science NECA, you know, are five percent proficient with distinction, but by the time they take the eleventh-grade NECA, they're two percent proficient with distinction, right? And that, as, and I hate, you know, are we seeing, as they get into high school, are we, are, is that distribution moving in a certain way from where they were when they were incoming students into, into the high school? And I know that's, that's a lot of data collection from sources that may or may not be available to us, and Amy has described that to us. But this is an initiative that I think would be helpful for the board to see, to make sure we're making the right investments into the right content areas to help move, move the data in the right direction. This is, it's useful for me to see eleventh graders compared over time, but, but what I think is more important is to see how that cohort of students have progressed over time. Have they moved from, from, you know, below proficiency to proficient or above based on the educational experience they're getting here at the high school? That, and, and so that's one direction I would like to try and work on and see if we can get the data, recognizing that's not where we are today, recognizing that the metrics are changing over time, but that would be helpful for the board to know that we're making the right investments in the right, in the right educational areas and that it's manifesting itself in the student achievement. Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the CCLs who came in? Or you want to say about-
I have something I want to say. I wanted to recognize the Josh Pauli and the K-12 Arts presentation as pastors, their evening was amazing. Andy Ruh only brought great- You know what it takes to organize an event of that size, and that was tremendous body of work.
And almost equally as difficult to manage, he pulled off today, which was a K-12 performing arts teacher meeting between Essex Town, Chittenden Central, every performing arts teacher together worked around visioning performing arts.
Great work, great work. Plus, I hear Jack lined you up for the Jazz Orchestra presentation at annual meeting. Thank you for that.
Do you want to speak to this briefly, this important document?
We knew that we didn't have time to have each CCL stand up and present, and I wanted to be sensitive to your time, which is why I gave it to you in writing. I thought if you had a question, you could ask. I don't know that I want to go over it because then Jill will be here till midnight, ready for her presentation and Mary J.
This is really well-written.
The CCLs have worked really hard together. I mean, it's really been two years, almost two years together. Joe talked about the fact that we've opened up conversations across content areas. It's made it challenging, to be honest, to have more conversation within content areas. And there's always that struggle, that balance to try to find that time. But I think one of the things that I'll point you to, if you haven't seen it yet, you know, they were responsible for redrafting the program of studies last year. And really what we, you know, the task I asked them to think about was rather than think about it within your content area, think about it as the reader reading the whole thing. And what we found were inconsistencies in language and approach. And they've worked really hard for the last two years to improve upon this. And then with the masterful help of Libby Heading, made it even prettier looking this year. So if you had a chance to look at the choices that are there, the terms that I keep hearing coming from the curriculum content leaders are embedded within the mission statement, which is providing rigorous and varied curriculum. And they're always going back and forth and asking, is it rigorous and is it varied? And are we providing those things? They also have fully immersed themselves in building the schedule. So I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but a lot of Post-its are involved and hand scheduling. And last year, I think we had some really positive feedback from families when it was more than nine people, thirteen people sitting in a room trying to build a schedule to ensure that kids had access to most, if not all, of the classes that they were asking for was tremendous. So they should be applauded for a lot of the work that they've done in the last two years.
Well, I had, I'd heard before Joe mentioned that there was quite a, quite a groundswell of interest in that marine biology and the, and I'm wondering as, as that goes on, that, that process of sort of providing the different avenues, the pathways within it. I mean, is there, is there a way to, I mean, besides just anecdotally saying like, they offered that, super popular, is there, is there a way to get some sort of data on that? Even, even before we generate things to find out? Like, do we have a report out to another school district that says, yeah, wow, we, we offered marine biology and it was phenomenal? That another school could then use that to kind of put into their memory bank? I mean, is there a sharing among schools that could generate curriculum offers besides just kind of counting on our own wheel chiseling?
Yeah, that would be a great opportunity to have. We, we've tried to do that in the past by doing visits to other schools and, and it's not something that is, has a good system. There, there is in the Chittenden County Science Teachers Group there. You know, and in the past, when we've had workshops, I think that was the intention with the association days in October that we used to have. But again, you know, just too many different things happening in different areas.
But to follow up on that, Brian, that's a good point, that the conference that some of us are going to be going to later this week, the New England Secondary School Consortium, we're able to team up. I know we're going to be teaming up with Falmouth, Maine, who has a similar interest in STEM-
In STEM.
And the arts pathways, to name a few. And we hosted Rutland High School in December for a STEM, all-day STEM meeting with CTEEHS, Rutland and Stafford Technical Center here. So there's, there's very much some intentionality going on about sharing best practices and ideas. For example, the Rutland folks have started their STEM approach from the middle school, whereas we've started ours with our seniors. And it's really just fascinating different viewpoints.
Yeah.
And how does that tie in with the next-gen science standards with obviously much more to come?
Yeah.
So, and Common Core math. So there's really a lot, lot percolating in that regard.
Thank you.
When I looked at the numbers, just a brief sort of plus-minus of the delta- When I looked at the numbers, just a brief sort of plus minus of the delta between the, um, free and reduced lunch population and the whole student body population, I think it seemed, seemed like there's a 5% bigger gap in the math and science area. Is that a fairly comp, because that, to, that to me seemed, I sort of expected it to be the other way around and to be more of a literacy issue, um, in terms of performance numbers, like the, but is that, is that something we see year to year that there is a greater difference?
I want to go back and look at it because in your school, I'm not sure that I've looked at it in that lens.
Yeah.
Math versus literacy. I tend to look at cohorts of groups and I start to look at the literacy math connection for each cohort.
Yeah.
I guess some of the most compelling research that I've looked at around supporting students of poverty, supporting students with English language learners, it's background language, it's background, um, content knowledge that often trips up students as they get a little bit older. And so the research really begs you to look at, how do you, how do you provide that background knowledge, even at a young age when they're coming in, um, with such varied areas of experiences? So, but sometimes that plays out in generalizations that are completely false also.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, really some of what we've talked about is if you have a rising, you know, it's the rising tides. If you lift all ships, then all students will benefit.
Right.
But we also have to keep an eye on the way that the expectations that we're setting for kids, we don't want to lower them, but we also want to keep in mind some kids don't have that background, particularly again, as your E-LAW numbers soar. I don't know that I answered your question very well, but I'm happy to go back and look at it the way that you asked it.
Do we have data, Amy, uh, on, on some of our dual enrollment students as to how that might manifest itself in proficiency above proficiency? You know, there's an emphasis that's going on in the state right now on dual enrollments and, and I would, I mean, I have in my mind what, how that would affect what we're seeing here, but, but, uh, I would be curious if there's any data at some point, if we have it or in the near future, how, how dual enrollment may manifest itself on standardized scores.
We could look at it. And Jack referenced a query request that he and I spoke about last week. We have had, one of, one of our barriers has been an absence of a, of a robust data system that's been allowed to query it in that way. We do have a, a task team now that's looking at building or buying a data system that would allow us to group kids and say, all kids who, say, for example, are in dual enrollment, and put them in a group and then start to query it in that way.
Right.
Um, I can ask Wendy to pull something out of Power School right now and, and, and sort of hand go through the measure progress data at this point. It would take me a little bit of, of time, but if you could start to generate some of those questions.
Exactly. I don't, I don't want to throw, keep-
So you do have a long turnaround period for now?
Keep throwing, uh, you know, fuel into the fire here, but it, that's the, the blessing and the curse of giving a board data is that you-
You want more data?
You get this and then, and then the juices start flowing and you're like, oh yeah, this is-
That's what's great about data. Data makes you, makes you want more data.
Right.
And that's the good stuff.
Can I, the, this whole kneecap in the fall, that gets changed with a new one, so it ends up being a spring test?
Yeah, so this fall is our last kneecap coming up.
Mm-hmm.
That'll be fall 2013. And then during the 2014-15 school year, we'll move to a smarter balanced assessment consortium administration in the spring.
And what's-
So it will be spring 2015.
So much bigger window.
Okay, what month is spring for them?
It will be a three-month window.
Three days.
It will be computer-assisted technology, so it's individual students logging on, which is good news for schools that will struggle with technology because they'll have a much greater window. But we can also think strategically about-
Crossing quarters and everything.
-pre-teaching for, for students who may struggle. There's also a performance task that will be asked of us in the middle of the year. So it's not completely in the spring.
I want to ask, uh, one, one additional question. When will the board receive, um, graduation requirement recommendations? Should we change, modify, delete certain requirements from graduation?
Well, I'll, I would semi-defer to my colleagues there. I know that's a conversation that is taking place, uh, graduation requirement recommendations.
It's something we really only started to talk about, graduation requirements from a Carnegie unit point of view, and then graduation requirements from a proficiency-based point of view are two different conversations. And we've just started to tap into that.
And I think the board imagines it as part of the visioning process and a good conversation to have with our community as well.
I would just like to know the timeframe on when we can realistically expect something.
I know there, we, we started looking at it this year, um, in some of our meetings. We had one addition, I think, I'm not sure if it's too early to talk about, we were looking at a personal finance type graduation requirement added in. There are some of us in a subgroup that are looking at what that would entail and, and we're hoping by the end of the year, we could have something to, to form a little bit, so we could bring it to you, got, um, the board possibly next fall or during the next school year. So I don't know if there's, you know, Amy mentioned, uh, if there's other opportunities other than just kind of your traditional Carnegie units, but I know there, we have been looking at, you know, some of those types of alternatives.
That's, that's very true. But, you know, I just don't want to lose sight of it.
And we don't either. It's personally-
And maybe what we should do is plan an update, whether it's a formal request or something, but maybe an update in terms of the thinking that's been going on around graduation requirements.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. Well, to our CCLs, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your pioneering work and, and just making a difference. So grateful for all you're doing.
Thanks, Travis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have on our agenda, I'm, I'm going to take the chairman's initiative here and postpone our questions on principals' reports here and ask Jill Prado to come forward and talk to us on the Rowland Fellows, so.
Welcome, Jill.
Thank you.
What a journey Jill's been.
Thank you.
Literally, negatively.
Where am I? Right here. Yes, that is true. Thank you for having me. Um, so I could talk for an hour, but I really, I won't, and I didn't plan to. And I shortened this PowerPoint with some of the most salient features for you because it's really the first chance I've had to talk to you a little bit formally, although I have spoken to Erin and Rob through our advisory board meetings. So I'd like to just tell you a little bit about this Rowland Fellowship that I received last year at about this time of year. So the Rowland Foundation Fellowship is a $100,000 grant awarded to five Vermont school teachers, high school teachers actually, in the state each year. I'm in the fourth cohort of Rowland Fellows. And the, uh, it is funded by two educational philanthropists, Barry and Wendy Rowland, who have, um, have an extraordinary interest in, in public, public education in this, in Vermont and really want to give back to Vermont. Their idea is to, uh, award this fellowship to teachers who wish to transform some aspect of secondary public education, uh, in some way that, that in their own schools and in the state, uh, in a very positive, innovative way. So that's sort of the foundation of it. One of the criteria in the application process itself was think big. That was very inspirational to me and I took that, um, I took that very seriously. So, um, the, uh, the project that I proposed and that have been working on all year is called the Virtual Intercultural, Intercultural Avenues Project, VIA. And the goal is to support learner and teacher effectiveness related to the acquisition of foreign language skills and cultural knowledge, all the while leveraging technology enablers and the virtual environment to reach K-12 students here in Vermont and abroad.
That's big.
Yes, it's big, it's big.
So it's limited to just the globe?
Yes. One of the things I had to do, you're actually the first presentation that I've given in English.
Wow.
The fir, because the sabbatical was the first half of the year, and so this presentation was in French, um, for starters, so I took out the French. I think there might still be a little bit in there. So basically what I'd like to do is create a portal by which students all over the world can connect. And, and that, and as I was reviewing this before I was going to talk to you, I was thinking that one of the themes here are, are, are connections. So I, I started with connections between Vermont, France, and Belgium. That was kind of the base point. And, and of those, um, of our state and those two countries, particularly Essex Junction, Lille in the north of France, Navan in the south of France, and Brussels. They say Bruxelles. I guess I spelled that in French. And then K-12 stu, uh, schools in Chittenden County and K-12 schools in Vermont. Basically, the, these are the, the, the overall connections that I envision for use of this, of this tool, of this technological enabler. The Rowland Foundation asks us to form an advisory board, um, a group that can offer us suggestions, critique, um, offer us contacts, new ideas. So this, I wanted to let you know who's, who is on this advisory board. For me, um, it's a lot of key players here in our, in our, our school, in our district, um, you know, and, and you know probably all of them, Amy, Carrie, Vince, or really, um, Carrie and Vince being instrumental with respect to the technology input for me. Um, Erin, I'm so happy to have you on the board as well, as a board member and as, as a parent. And, um, and Rob and Deb Stark and Louise have been incredible right, right here in the school, very supportive, very, very strong supporters. And Moira Taylor is, um, a former student of mine, and I asked her to be on the board as well. And I'll probably add more students to this, to this advisory board, uh, so that I have a lot of student voice represented. In addition, there are other connections, and the connections go beyond Essex High School. I formed, um, and a, a collaborative work group of teachers in Chittenden County. And they come from here, ADL, Burlington High School, CVU, and Tuttle Middle School. And they were people who were recommended to me, um, by Ro, of former Rowland Fellows, by people who said, oh, I know who's very good with this aspect of education or has this techno, technological, um, interest, uh, was particularly savvy in this area. And all of these people, um, have come together and have, um, we've had, uh, a couple virtual meetings and a couple in, in-person meetings. And I'm really happy to have middle school, uh, teachers involved as well. It quickly became apparent that the project was good for not just the high school, but for all, uh, really a K-12. I just thought, this is one of the pictures of the Navan teachers. Um, there was a, another group on the whole, on the other side, so it was a rather large group. And, uh, I, and, and the more I talked, the more people were coming in. So the principal came in, the director and the sous-directeur, and they're very formal there. So it was really, um, a very exciting, uh, time. It was my first huge presentation and, uh, um, when I finished, it was, to use a very outdated term, it was radio silence. And then, um, and then they all started to talk at once. It's very French. So, um, but anyway, that, they, they loved, they loved the idea and they, they were, um, they were really thrilled. They were, they were thrilled to be invited. They were, they were thrilled with the idea itself and they had all, it generated all kinds of ideas. Um, they were thinking about applying for grants to their region, they're thinking about coming here, they're, you know, thinking of all kinds of ideas. So that's the Navan group, one of the, one of the cities. And this is, one of the outcomes of that meeting was to plan another meeting to keep the momentum going. I wanted to introduce the Navan teachers to the Essex team. So this is the advisory group, the collaborative group, so teachers and my advisory group and the Navan group over here. This is in the Essex High School Conference Room, and this is a Scopia classroom, which is a virtual classroom. And they, uh, this took us about three or four tries, three or four days to get all of this set up so that we could connect, we could hear each other, see each other, and, uh, on both sides. So Carrie and I were working on it, Sihil and Luke and Lo were working on it on this end, but this, so we were talking to them, so we were in that room talking to them. And I was able to introduce everybody. So it was really fun, real, really a great meeting. Um, this is, I, the, the connection is of course about students. So these were two girls in, um, in Brussels. I went into this class to introduce the project and talk to their, uh, to several classes. And, uh, I have a little video clip that I can't show you because it didn't embed into the PowerPoint, but these two girls were giggling and telling what their name was, and they said that they had some questions about the US. And she said, well, I know it's really ridiculous, and this is all in French, she said, it's ridiculous, but is it like the movies? And then her teacher asked her to explain a little bit, well, can you give an example of what kind of movie? Are you thinking of one in particular? And she said, yes, and I know it's ridiculous, but is it like High School Musical? And, uh, of course I, um, couldn't help but say, it's exactly like that. Just kidding. But they, they have the same, and then this girl goes on to ask, do you love spaghetti? So, uh, they have the same small and big questions of us that we have of them, and that was really nice to see. But in general, these are the modes of communication that we'd like to tap into, the, um, language acquisition and cultural knowledge overall through communication. And then using these tools, Blogger, Tumblr, Scopia, which is the virtual classroom, Skype, email, blogs, chat, MIL, which is Middlebury Interactive Languages. These are all the things that we have at our fingertips that I would like to be able to harness so that kids can use them and teachers can use them to collaborate and correspond and learn. The other connection, going, continuing across the Atlantic, is, um, something called e-Twinning. E-Twinning is a project-based, enormous network for edu, for educators throughout the European Union. And, uh, the overall project is called Erasmus for All. And e-Twinning is the high school-level project-based learning within Erasmus for All. And I met, when, when I was in Brussels, because it's the headquarters, the European Union headquarters, I went to the European Commission. And first I spoke to, uh, the people who are at the higher education level, and they put me in charge with the e-Twinning, uh, policy officers. And I met with them, and it is the education and culture policy officers at the European Commission who recommended that we try a first phase of this project, of the portal that I'm developing, through e-Twinning, which is a tremendously, uh, developed platform that allows for, um, has an, uh, email exchange between teachers, a capacity to collaborate among educators and among students, to, um, have video chat, video conference, upload PowerPoints, all kinds of technology embedded in a highly sophisticated platform. And we, at Essex High School, we are the first US school to ever be part of a European Union-wide project. We, there, there is no other US school that has ever been, had this partnership. So I, I did a screenshot because it has the welcome Jill Prado, I was very excited this happened during vacation. And this is the name of the project, so we did kind of a phase one of the Rowland Project. We did it through e-Twinning. So the three, the three schools in, in Europe, Brussels, Navan, and Lille, and Essex High School, are now working within the e-Twinning platform. So there'll be more to come on that. Rob is used to that. They give him, give him an update every couple days, a couple minute soundbite every couple days. So that, that was just, um, really a thrill. Back at home, the other connection is with Middlebury College. Uh, last spring, one of the things that I wanted to do with the portal that, that we're creating for Essex High School is to offer Middlebury Interactive Languages through this portal. And Middlebury Interactive Languages, it's a slate of, of very high-tech, um, very state-of-the-art, immersive language courses by this uni, by this college that is known for language instruction. And they have, um, they, what I talked to them about was would they be willing to, uh, offer us a very attractively priced, uh, slate of courses that we could use through the portal? And this would be wonderful because we would learn how to use this online platform, our teachers would learn how to do this, we would learn, um, our, our students would be exposed to this incredible curriculum, we would kind of standardize curriculum. And that is, for, for Middlebury's purposes, it's, um, Middlebury Interactive Languages is actually the, um, uh, it's, they, they work as, they are for-profit essentially working with Middlebury College. So they are selling these courses. I said that it was basically a community service to be offering it to us at this attractively priced, uh, rate. Well, it came to fruition. And that we are going to get the contract for those slated courses, and we will have them here next year. And we'll also have MidWorld, which is a, an immersive, interactive, second life-like game. And this is a, a snapshot of it as well. You have an avatar and you go on, you have a mission or an adventure, and the students manipulate the character and have to kind of behave within this- within this context in French, and choose the right, the right expressions, and ask the right people based on a series of prompts. So it seems really fun. So they have an avatar, ton avatar, and they can personalize ton avatar, so personalize your avatar, peau, skin, cheveux, hair, visage, face, et cetera. And then they proceed to, to, to play the game. So teachers will have access to that, students will have access to that. And we'll be among the first in Chittenden, in, in the state to have this. So then, on a national scale, I actually, during vacation as well, I talked to the US Department of Education, and was trying to find out who I could talk to, to tell them about this project, and to see, to see if there might be any, anybody who could help me or give me some more advice. So I ended up talking, sending a long letter to the Office of Educational Technology, and they wrote me right back, and said they're forwarding my letter to the Office of International Affairs, they'd like me to come and talk about it. And what I said was, I'd like to find some ways in, in which we're at the beginning stages of developing the portal, and if, if the portal can reflect some of the mission of the Office of International Affairs and the Office of Educational Technology at the national level, then we should definitely do that. So they, they were, they've invited me in April. So I'm really excited about that. Overall, I would say that this grant has been an opportunity to really seize upon emerging technologies and be able to think about ways to offer more to our students for, for less, without having to expand faculty necessarily, but to, to standardize curriculum, have it be state-of-the-art, offer more, and basically harness, harness those kinds of emerging technologies. And to think about how we might be able to do more of that organizationally in, in the very near future. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
When do you meet the president?
That's what the director of the Roland Foundation said, when I told him, I, his name is Chuck Scranton, and when I told him that I had gone to the European Commission, he said, when are you talking to the ambassador? And I was thinking, well, that's a good idea. I didn't, I didn't get to, to talk to the ambassador, but...
Sure, that's good.
So I think, I, I think that it's hit, it's, it's, it's very timely. And I, it's been well-received by all of these different audiences. I think they recognize that this is a way to have a virtual exchange. And everybody says right away, oh, I want, I, maybe we, the kids in Brussels said, maybe we can go to America. And the kids here said, maybe, oh, we'll go to France. And of course, that's what they want. But they also think it would be very cool to be able to correspond with these students easily from, from, you know, with, in a traditional school environment and outside of school.
Wow, Jill.
Look at the amount of contacts you've had in the short time since you've had the grant. It is amazing, that's a great word. And the opportunity for our kids going forward is off the charts.
Well, we have a filmmaker coming on Friday to make a kind of explanatory promotional film, and my students are going to be part of it. So...
And we're gonna check, make sure they're all okay.
Very excited. Yes, we'll make sure everybody's okay. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please email me or give me a ring. I really appreciate your having me.
Well, thank you.
Great work, Jill.
Thank you.
Jill, I would just, I would just say, now, as, as you continue to work on these initiatives through the Roland Foundation, if, if you can keep us posted through Rob, in case there's support that the board can offer you to continue this initiative, that would be, that would be great also, so, so we, we know how this is progressing and that, if there's support that we can give.
Thank you. That's, that's great. We can definitely do that.
Rob Ho, Jill, thank you. I'm also gonna take the chairman's prerogative here, and we're gonna postpone the EHS attendance tax, task team, item number eight, and, and jump into item number nine, which is our board visioning. Brian, I, I wonder if you wouldn't mind, as you're, I'll give you 20 seconds to swallow, but...
Fourth sip of liquid so far this evening, and five more. And it coincides with you asking.
But, but if, if you wouldn't mind giving us the 30-second status of what's going on with board visioning, and, and introduce Mary Jane to the board, and then we'll let Mary Jane have the floor here on...
Absolutely. I think when we last met, we discussed, and I introduced the, the concept that I had, in, in connection with our goal that we passed this year as a board, following up our summer retreat and going into some of extra planning, I had contacted a consultant per our timing. That contact was shortly after some of our budget development work, where we had placed a placeholder in for those services going into FY14. So I did an extensive research study by contacting Mike, and, and asking Mike just who in the world might be able to do this. He had a, a short list, and, and at the top of the list was, was...
Mary Jane.
Mary Jane.
Well, I feel better already.
Still trying to get over my brief carbonation. Mary Jane, and, and what was interesting in a quick conversation we had with her, that she, she talked about some of her capabilities and her strengths by explaining a strategic planning process she had done for Colchester School District. And it, it had a number of elements, I think, we as a board had talked about in having community conversations, multiple stakeholders, a process that had time, had both sort of expansion and contraction opportunities to come back with a core group, but then do some deep dives into opinions and feelings that the community had. That followed up with a meeting that Jack, myself, Judy, and Mike had. And where we went further into not only that process, but further into some of the materials I think you'll see this evening about her approach, her style, and how some of the results happen from that style. So, does that give us a context where we are today? And then I think we have...
I have, I have a surprise. It's a different presentation than the one I think you already have on your, on your computers or laptops, iPads. Anybody who's ever worked with me knows that, like, until the last minute, I, I just have to make things better, whatever that might look like. So you might not agree it's better, but you don't know what it used to look like. So I think I'm good. So it's a really small group, but I don't know all of you. So if we could just do quick introductions, I think I recognize some of you from the Community and Safety School and Community Safety Dialogue that we had a few weeks ago. I facilitated that meeting, lots of fun preparing for that. So anyway, I'm Mary Jane Shelley, and the rest of you that I don't know, could introduce yourself?
Yeah, Ryan McLaren, board member, I was at the...
Hi, Ryan.
I'm Mary Jane.
Hi, Rob.
I'm Gary Baker.
Hi, Gary. Judy Nolan.
Jack, Dave Lindor.
Al Margu.
And I'm Erin Knox.
And I'm Brian.
And I'm Mary Jane.
I love it when people can't remember names. Doesn't it just make you feel better?
Not the person that can't remember the name.
So it's a really small group tonight. So while I do have a PowerPoint, it's just gonna kind of be there. I'm not gonna read from it. I'm happy to have you guys jump in and ask questions as I go through the slides. Because I got to have the opportunity to meet with Brian and Jack and Judy and Mike for a while, a few weeks ago, kind of got a sense of what you're looking for. But I really, after I speak briefly about this, really hoping to just have a dialogue, conversation with you around what you're looking for, and how the approach that I take for strategic planning might be a good match for that. And in the ways that you're not so sure, we can talk about that as well. So please interrupt, and, you know, I know we have half an hour, but, you know, it's late, and I'm not gonna keep anybody beyond the time that you're about to turn into a pumpkin. So, without further ado, I'll jump in. So typical strategic planning, I've been doing work as, my background 25 years ago is a social worker, clinical social worker with their, with students in schools, adolescents primarily, clinical director of a therapeutic high school years ago in Boston. So I kind of always had an orientation to schools, to education. And about seven years ago, opened my own company and did a fair amount of strategic planning in schools. And it was always with a kind of a traditional work with, if I was lucky, I worked with the board. If I was lucky. It was a lot of times just working with administrators to say, we need a little bit of a vision here. You know, we do a lot of action planning year to year, but eh, where are we going with all this? So I, I did some kind of more traditional strategic planning with a small group of administrators, looking at their vision. Didn't really involve students, or parents, or community members, and like I said, very often not board members. Faculty typically wasn't involved. So what I found in that kind of strati- traditional strategic planning is administrators spend a whole lot of time getting people up to speed, getting them in the loop, getting them on the same page, so that then they could go and implement this plan. A lot of times, I've worked with them in my coaching capacity with administrators, on how can we deal with people's resistance to not wanting to implement this plan that they were never a part of creating. So we'd spend a whole lot of time just kind of working through the roadblocks to get people to implement this thing, that they're like, well, why did nobody ask me about that? So about, probably about four years ago, I became very interested in appreciative inquiry. And appreciative inquiry is a kind of alternative approach to a lot of things in terms of organizational systems, working with positive organizational change. But primarily, the difference, you know, most of our, most of our systems are designed to look at problems, to analyze problems at more and more specificity. You get better and better grounded in everything that doesn't work in your organization. And I think my experience with that, especially with teachers, is they tend to feel a lot of blame and shame and finger pointing, and what did you not do right, and this is wrong, and how can you fix it, tends not to be very inspirational. So when I, I just kind of steeped myself in, read basically every book you could in appreciative inquiry that's out there, and started doing it in kind of a big way, in a lot of different schools that I work. So about three years ago, I was approached by Colchester School District, and they asked me if I would be interested in putting together a strategic plan. And I said, yes, but let's talk about how I'd like to do that. And so since then, it's kind of the way that I tend to look at organizational development, which is, let's steep ourselves, instead of looking at the problems, let's steep ourself in stories and inquiry about the times that things have worked well. Because in every organization, every school system, every district, there are a whole lot of things that work well. So that's where we start, is having dialogue, having conversations around, when I'm listening to these things, you guys have so many awesome things happening in this district. So it's more a question of, let's have conversations and discover what is so awesome about this district, create our vision around, imagine we were able to do this all the time, and of, and this is, this is the way we do business, what would we look like five years from now, or six years? You depend on the timeframe you wanna look at. And then how can we design our schools so that we take the best of everything that's already working and going for us? How can we take the best of that and maximize it to get to this vision? But it all starts with inquiry and an appreciation of what is going really well already. So my experience with this district, who hadn't passed a budget, and I don't know, I don't know the last time Colchester passed a budget, this was after the strategic planning, they passed their budget for the first time. We had 80-plus people from retired, retired community members, business people, middle school students, parents, administrators, lots of faculty, paraprofessionals. They all came together, and they, we created an interview guide where they asked each other questions about the best things that have happened in their district. And we analyzed it, and they looked at it, and they created like, one of your CCLs, I think that's, they were CCLs, not LCLs, was talking about different pathways. So we talked about, okay, you've got this vision for where you wanna go. You, community, you help us figure out our pathways. You got a lot of wisdom in this room. So it really builds on what works well from many perspectives to create the vision and to create those pathways. So three primary things that come up, I think I've just skipped about eight slides. Three primary things, it's fully positive, it's looking at what works well. And we had some people who were like, well, how can we not look at problems? You're just, this is like Pollyanna, you're sweeping these things under the rug. And what I talked to them about is, it's not saying that every organization doesn't have issues, doesn't have problems. Where are you putting your magnifying glass? What are you gonna magnify? What are you gonna focus? Are you gonna focus on what doesn't work well, to somehow learn what you wanna do that does work? Doesn't even make so much logical sense to spend a whole lot of time looking at where things are broken, thinking you're going to discover, how do you get a system that works well? You figure out how to get a system works well by analyzing the things that already work. And that grounds people to say, yeah, we can do more of this, we're already doing this in our French program, we can do it over here. Joe Chase, he's already doing this in technology, we can, we can transfer that over into this thing. So it looks at the strengths that you already have in your district from a fully positive way, engaging people in dialogue, deep conversations. And the people who are involved is everybody who cares in this community. So as a board, it gives you tremendous opportunity to connect, and not just with the same old, same old people that come to the meetings, to connect with anybody who's paying taxes, anybody who cares about what's happening in your budget, who cares about, you know, do, one of the questions that, that Colchester, Colchester started out with is, what do you think gives you the biggest bang for the buck? That was one of their inquiry questions in the beginning. What's a big bang for the buck from your perspective, person who has a house, a second home on the lake, and doesn't have kids in the school? What, what brings value to you in our school district? What can we, what should we be providing that you think it matters to you that we're providing this education? So you're connecting with stakeholders at all different levels. It's not just about what are the outcomes we want for kids, but how are we gonna get there, and why, and what do you value in this community? So the possibility of having your board be able to engage in that level of dialogue, I think, is, is the biggest benefit for you, is you're hearing from so many different people, you're looking at what works well, and asking very deep questions of people. So let's see what I've missed. And, and you guys then can jump in. How do I just, I think arrows. No, I think it keeps going back to next. So appreciative inquiry, it's a philosophy, it's an approach for organizational change, it's a methodology. I use appreciative inquiry in the coaching that I work with, that I do with administrators. I use it, you're using it in many places in U46 right now. You may not even know it. But they're, I'm working right now with Aaron McGuire at ACE. And ACE is putting together a one-day summit, they just named it. It's ACE Past, Present, and Future. So I'm working with Aaron and the ACE faculty right now to create a one-day visioning summit, kind of a mini thing, where they're engaging in people who care about ACE. And where do you want us to be going? So what's happening there, I'm working with CTE right now, with Carolyn Dickinson. She and I are off, are doing a three-credit class through St. Mike's, teaching 20 of their faculty members about appreciative inquiry, so that they can use it with their students. They're using it to impact how they teach, they're using it in how they advise students. So they're taking this idea of appreciation and asking questions to develop action research projects to make them more effective teachers. So it's being, you know, kind of introduced in different places, appreciative inquiry is. I don't know if there's a whole lot of new material... I don't know if there's a whole lot of new material in here. So if you guys are okay with it, this kind of gives what the framework is. I do want to just tell a little bit about what that framework looks like. And then I can show some slides on kind of what this process looks like, start to finish. But other than that, just jump in and ask me questions if you're okay. So the overall structure of appreciative inquiry, there's many different models, but the one I typically work with is first defining what that strategic planning topic is. So what is it we want to grow in U forty-six? What do we want more of? What do we, what is it we want to become? Kind of what is our topic? In Colchester, that topic was many voices, one vision. So the idea that we have many, many different perspectives, but at the end of the day, we've got one vision for our school. That won't be what your particular topic is. It's strategic planning, it's looking at the future, but you will have the, your own question that you're really trying to ask. I work with a group of, kind of a core planning team to figure out what is it exactly that we want to inquire about? So we develop questions that get into both the past and the present strengths and opportunities that exist in U forty-six. And people interview each other and ask questions and learn from those deep interviews what's important to, and, and what are the strengths in your district that already exist? They work together um through different processes um to create a, a shared vision for U forty-six. They work together again to design those pathways, those initiatives, those strategic um initiatives that are gonna get you to that vision. And then they work to implement and, and figure out the benchmarks. How are we going to measure the success of this plan that we've just created? So it's kind of this five D process. Um, in, in general, that's, there's a lot to it, but that, that's it in a nutshell. Um, I'm gonna jump to... I talked about the three broad ways of which of an appreciative inquiry visioning process is unique. It's about asking unconditionally positive questions. It focuses on the schools at their best and the whole system is involved in, in the inquiry process. So before we talk about kind of what are the concrete steps that go into it, I'm just gonna open it up to people asking questions. What would you like to know more about?
You're not a change agent, trying to clarify those broad, those positive ways.
Um, I'm not the change agent. I am a facilitator of a process that has you guys deciding what you want to change and how you're gonna do it. I am, I am a consultant on process. I'm not a content expert. You are the experts in your district and your stakeholders know what they want. So this is about, what I bring to the table is understanding deeply a process that can get you to the changes that you want to co-create in your community. Does that make sense though?
It does.
Other questions?
So is the first step in the process, then basically your previous slide, um, that, that was a visioning statement coming up with that?
Let me get to kind of a general, I'm gonna go to the next one. So obviously, the first step in the process is deciding, does this make sense for your district? That's the first step, is you guys making a decision. Um, there are many ways to do strategic planning. Um, I'm, I'm kind of committed because I've seen it work over and over and over again, even in very skeptical systems where they mostly think, ah, we can't. You know, the first time I got called in to do some work using appreciative inquiry was um, a school district in which there was, there were, um, they were having meetings with the faculty that they wouldn't allow the principal to attend. Because they were having grievances, you know, they were, you know, they were not, they, they were basically hijacking faculty meetings. And I got called into by the superintendent saying, help, can you work in our climate? We have climate issues in our school. And um, and he wanted me to like interview people about what the issues were with the climate in the school. I'm like, nah, mm-mm, no. Um, I'd love to do this work around climate, but this is how I would approach it. Um, I'll have a meeting with um your teachers and we could spend our time saying, um, why do we have such low staff morale? Or we can ask a question like, how do we maximize our collaborative engagement and collaborative, how do we maximize that? So people asked that question and what they found out about was they were like so excited. So the, this school continues to ask positive questions. They're not going down that rabbit hole of all the things that are broken. It's really changed their system by saying, huh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna keep getting stuck there. So I have a particular approach that uses appreciative inquiry. There are other people who do strategic planning who will do a much more kind of in-house strategic planning process using the expertise of the educators. And that is another approach that you can absolutely take and it's legitimate. Um, I think you have to decide, are your goals really to just develop this plan that we implement? Or is your, are your goals around engaging the community in a different kind of a positive conversation around what they want? So that's kind of your first decision point is, does it make sense to find out more about this? And the time I have tonight, we're not gonna get all the ins and outs of it, but that really is in a nutshell, the, are you intrigued enough to learn more about this particular approach to strategic planning? Then I would work with, assuming the answer's yes, if it was, I would work with an advisory team to, um, and it would probably be a couple board members so that every time we met, you don't have to warn it. So it'd be whatever is less than half. Um, I'd work with an advisory team, um, of a couple of board members, a couple of administrators um, to kind of provide the overall direction, um, you know, where are we headed, oversight. That advisory team would work closely with me to figure out the budget, the process, the timeline, how are we gonna communicate this? And select what I call a core planning team. The core planning team in Colchester was thirty-two people. It was community members, it was somebody from the DOE who worked, who lived in um, Colchester and really wanted to be a part of this process. Um, it was um, uh, parents, business people, um, trying to think if we had any board members. Administrators, they spent two days just learning about appreciative inquiry. What is this all about? And they learned, how do we ask questions? And they created questions so that they could go out into their community and figure out, what is our community want to grow? What do they want to know more about? So worked with them for a couple days. So that selecting of a core planning team is key to start getting your sense out there of what is important. That kind of builds the, builds from the ground up, people who are like, yeah, we want to know more about this. It's not just you guys having to bring this out in the community. You got a core group of stakeholders who say, yeah, we want to learn about this and we're gonna make it happen. This core planning team ends up being like the wedding planners. They do the logistics of this community gathering. They, they figure out the invitations, they work with me to put together the interviews, guide. They, um, in Colchester, they had um, door prizes, they had Costco donated things, so many people donated. It was like a huge community event and this core planning team puts it on with my, you know, with me working with them. So again, you get many people who are really invested in this process. Um, so those are kind of the next steps, you know, I, there's, you know, I could, I can, do I have one? And then a very general timeframe, this is not something that happens in a couple months. We're talking a year, year and a half of different guideposts along the way, um, of building the, building the excitement, building the inquiry base. So meeting monthly with the advisory team, forming that core planning team, um, having an initial planning meeting to learn about appreciative inquiry and develop the questions for an initial inquiry. Then we plan the event, which tends to be a kind of a two-day planning summit where I go through that four-D process. And then there's a follow-up on writing the plan with the information gathered at the summit. Brian and I talked a little bit af- at the end of our last meeting. It can go through benchmarking and figuring out, how did this work? It doesn't have to start with the writing of the plan. You could follow it through into your action plan to say, so how's this working? Is it still happening? So it kind of, it's, it's a matter of your scope and that, that would be part of the conversation is, what is your scope? What is your timeframe? How long do you want this process? How much engagement do you want? And those would be board decisions that I, that I'd make with you through your advisory team. That's probably more than you're asking, but hopefully that clarified and even more. So other questions? What else are people wondering about?
Well, I think one of the things I, I probably, uh, I'd like to lend now that I could have lent at the beginning was the, to remind us of the, the wording of what we, what we intend on doing, either on our own or with someone else, but what we've committed to, um, to the, to the constituency of U forty-six. That the board in conjunction with the supervisory union and school-based staff will commission and initiate a visioning and strategic planning process which engages all of the core stakeholders of the Union Forty-Sixth School District in establishing a long-range strategic direction for Essex High School and the Center for Technology Essex. The conclusion of this multi-year process will be the Essex Community Educational Center's Vision Twenty Twenty Report and will foresee what the Union's School District Forty-Sixth should look like, operate like, and be achieving by the year twenty twenty. So, you know, that was, we, we, we kicked that around for a while, both at the, in our first planning session and going into the second one, to try to get past this idea of inwardly focused goals, which we had tried on as a board, um, or just annual benchmarks and then the kicking around of data to try to determine whether we were seeing continuous improvement, to try to jump over, in many ways, administration who is charged with that short-term twelve, eighteen-month view just because of the speed in which life goes and be able to go over and then engage our constituents. Um, you know, as we talk about, as we talk about constituents and we think of something like graduation requirements and thinking, let's, reaching out to our alumni, reaching out to people that are in the career and school workforce and having an engagement with them and saying, so seriously, what, what worked? What, what stuck for you? You know, and having at least that feedback. Um, and I love this, I think in a school district particularly, um, I think it's just, I think focusing on the strengths and working to replicate those and repeat those and strengthen uh, that area rather than focusing in on the weaknesses is certainly gonna be far more productive than I've seen the other ways to go.
I, I, I sometimes take the opposite, but I can take both, I can appreciate both points of view. Uh, I like to know what's not working in order, because our budgeting process takes years before we can affect any improvement, because it's infrastructure needs, staff needs, restructuring of the school facility. I mean, it takes a lot of time. It's important to have both the, the data and a justification for move, for changing direction. But um, I haven't worked with this process before, but I've worked with other strategic planning processes. That is more needs-based, data-based. Because in business, you just have to move to, to where your competition is moving to.
Right, right.
Here's a little different in that up until now, we haven't had a lot of competition. But with changing laws and things, we very well might.
Yeah, what you, what you're talking about in more strategic, traditional strategic planning, there's kind of environmental scanning. It's looking at what are the, you know, what are our internal weaknesses, what are the external threats, you know? So um, I hear exactly what you're saying and there is a very intentional choice in appreciative inquiry strategic planning to say that we, what usually happens is you spend most of your time in W and T. It's mostly looking at your internal weaknesses and threats. So what I find is that because of the richness of who shows up at the table um, in this version of, of um, strategic planning, you've got Mike and Jack and yourself and you come to the table knowing what the threats are. You know what the weaknesses are. So when you're creating your vision, while we may not say, Al, what are all the problems in the system? You're thinking, here are the problems in the system, so when I'm creating my vision, I'm thinking beyond those problems. So people bring that, you know, they have, it's like everybody brings the problems with them. So it's a question of how do we flip that from, we're gonna spend a whole lot of time deconstructing the problems to, we're gonna flip it to, imagine that wasn't here, what would you want, what would you look like? So it's, it's, it draws people to that vision rather than scares people by what they don't want more of. So I absolutely understand and I, and I think that, um, you know, I, I have a slide there about places that now, um, I would say appreciative inquiry is the dominant organizational development framework. So Green Mountain Coffee Roasters, um, US Army, US Navy, McDonald's, Verizon, um, British Airways. They're using appreciative inquiry because it works. If it didn't work, they wouldn't use it. Um, you know, uh, you know, ten million dollars just got donated to Champlain College to look at appreciative inquiry because it works. So again, there are approaches that, um, and there are times when you really do need to do that very deep environmental scan to make sure that you're not stepping in some, someplace that you don't want to be going. But I think you're right in that in a school district, fortunately, it's not so much about what's chit and, you know, CVU doing. It's what does our community value? What do we want for our students? What are the outcomes that matter to us in this school district? So...
I've talked to a lot of people over the years, so I've got some pretty good ideas about what they want.
Yeah.
What they need. So, um, I think it could work.
I would say with, um, that's, a, a lot of appreciative inquiry techniques are already being applied in how our school culture are being rolled out amongst all, and taking a CCSU perspective, not just U forty-six. But, but uh, these types of what are we doing well, how can we grow this? Uh, uh, amongst all our CCSU schools is, is one of the outcomes that came from our culture. Our climate, climate survey data is, is taken, is actually, I would say morphed or transformed from uh, being, focusing on the negative to focusing on the positive, you know? And, and uh, this was actually before I even became aware of the term appreciative inquiry, that, that work was, was going that way, so I...
I'd had the good fortune this summer of meeting with many of your administrators and offering a one that should have been three-day training, still kicking myself over this, in appreciative inquiry. And as a result of that, that's where different pockets happen. So you have Mary, um, at Summit saying, um, how can we look at that climate data from a what works well? How can we look at the data? And I have Marcy in Westford saying, Mary Jane, can we talk about what works well? So you, you have these, you have people who have this, who are, it's, it's consistent with their view. Most educators, that's kind of the way they, they're, that's their bent. You give me something to look at that's working well and that's where I'd rather spend my time. It's why they're teachers, because they want to grow things that are good. So I think it's a very consistent point of view. Um, and you're, you're absolutely right, Jack, that, that it's starting to infuse how people look at things. Um, I, I had the great fortune of working, um, right in the beginning of the year with the Essex High School Design Team, looking at kind of how do we, what is our vision for a high-functioning design team? So again, they looked at the strengths that they each bring uniquely to, if we did this all the time, what could we look like? So it is just kind of starting to percolate out there and I think it makes sense to people, which is why it's sticking as a framework.
The other thing I'll add, Mary Jane, is that even outside of our CCSU community, our, our Essex community is using, in its heart and soul of Essex Initiative, a lot of appreciative inquiry techniques in understanding what makes this a great place. Why do you choose to live here? Why do you choose to live here? You know, these kinds of themes and topics on what our community standards are, which I think would dovetail wonderfully into what we might want to do as we look at this from a school district standpoint, using appreciative inquiry techniques to help define where we want to go in the future.
Yes.
How important is the sort of development of a topic? Or like a focus of the questions that we're asking? So I mean, it seems like that's a very, I mean, that's sort of the core, the start of the conversation.
It's key.
So how mu, and is there, I mean, is that, so that's what the initial sort of core planning team?
Yes.
Is doing?
Yes.
And the goal is to make that as broad as possible?
Well, let me tell you what the, kind of a little bit quick nuts and bolts. The core planning team, we, I asked just kind of three very broad questions around, kind of standard questions around, tell me high-point stories. I'm going to translate it. Tell me a high-point story that you had with Essex High School or with CTE. Who was involved? What were you doing? What was the outcome? And then, and what made it possible? So what were the conditions that allowed this good thing to happen? Then we asked questions about, from your perspective, what do you value about this district? So then we analyzed the themes that these 35 people developed in their questions. We analyzed the high-point stories to say, what were those root causes of success? When things worked? What were they all about? So it was from the things that people valued. Oh, and then we asked a question, if you could have three wishes to increase the life, the vitality, the health of Essex High School and CTE, what would they be? So again, we analyzed those themes to say, wow, these are the things that people are really excited about and want to know more about in our district. So I worked with them then to develop interview questions. Each person on the core planning team went out and interviewed three people. So we created a stakeholder map from, again, retired people, business people, people who didn't have kids in the schools, high school students, middle-class school students. They interviewed, I think, 120 people. We brought all that data back and again, we analyzed the themes to say, okay, we've now had 105 people we heard from. What is important to them? So from that, that's where the summit, the two-day actual event, that's where those questions came from.
This is almost like my old research methods class.
Well, you need a, you need a good guide who can keep you on track and not make it too onerous and actually kind of make it fun.
No, it is. It's pretty straightforward. I think I could answer those questions right off the top of my head, but...
It's about the conversation. You could. Probably any board people, any person who spent the effort and time and commitment you've spent to this board really knows what your community cares about and what matters to them. But it's about the relationship and the conversation and the you, them telling you, that's where the value is. That's where the engagement and the commitment on the community's part happens.
Right.
But you may not find out a whole lot of things you didn't already know. But that's, you know...
But it's the connection.
It's the connection, the relationship, the community, the opportunity to connect around very meaningful board work that not many boards do.
So can you go back to that slide again? Where there's the clouds around it.
Yep, absolutely. So back to Anshu.
What Ryan was saying, because I'm still trying to wrap myself around, where is the starting point here? So we need to come up with this central, would you say, topic theme?
The topic comes, that core of defining what your topic is, kind of, I call it name the baby, like what is this all about? Usually comes after that first meeting when the core planning team are, like, sometimes the topic even comes in the second one where they're out there connecting and interviewing people and it's like, that's where they came up with many voices, one vision. This is a, forget bifurcated, this is five different communities in Colchester. It's like, woo, you know, you got your this community and that community. So to them, many voices, one vision meant a lot, but it came through the conversations they had. So I think what you're getting at and the confusion sometimes, Erin, is that it's an iterative process. This 4D or the 5D happens with, it happens with the advisory team of even deciding who do they want. It happens a little bit with, it happens with that core planning team of what do we want to know more about? It happens when they're deciding the interview questions. So we do pieces of this circle of, it's iterative. We discover what's important, we figure what do we want? How are we going to get there? We implement it. So it kind of, it happens with different groups of people and it kind of, it grows.
I think the first, the first step is to decide whether, you know, the process is being explained is one option of trying to accomplish our goal. Our goal has a deadline of explaining to the community and showing some transparency that on April 5th, we'd say, this is what we're planning on doing as far as a visioning and strategic planning process. We know that visioning and strategic planning is two of the top seven essential responsibilities as a board from the Vermont School Board Association. I think it's fair to say we've done very little to none of it. And so, you know, are we, are we going to use this method? Are we going to research another method? Are we going to postpone our April 5th deadline? That would be the first step. And then, and then we learn more. And also, we don't control it. We're actually asking the questions to have the answers control the process.
If I can quickly interject between the two of you. Before, let's say you decided you wanted to know more, the very next step really would be meeting with an advisory team to create some sort of a Gantt chart. You know, it'd be like, okay, here's the timeline. You know, this would happen now, then this, then this, so that the board fully understands what it is you're committing to before you commit to anything. So while we don't have the time to do that tonight and it would be putting the apple cart before the horse because you haven't even decided this is what you want, before you have April 5th or whenever you go to the community with this information, you would be really clear, much clearer than we could get tonight about what would this process look like and what would that timeframe be? And it would be very much your timeframe that you're helping me know, this is when we want this, and then I can help you create that sense of a timeline for it.
So for tonight to move the process forward, we need to decide if this is the method that we want to use. Because, I mean, obviously our April 5th timeline is, you know, over that deadline. So that would be our first step, right? Was, is to decide that this is going to be our method and then we can...
I'm just trying to figure out where, because I mean, we've sort of done this, not necessarily with the same process, but there's sort of been a defin, there's been a defining process in our, just visioning. Like our, our vision, our board vi, like we're defined sort of what the goal is, like 2020. You know what I mean? And like, so I'm just trying to think about where that fits in this process. So we, that's sort of our starting point. We've done that. And then, is the next step to take that, to use the sort of core planning team to sort of hone in on specific aspects of what is possible by 2020? Like what the areas of focus are for that strategic planning process? And then move forward with that? That's, that's sort of where I'm struggling.
Right, like, because I'm thinking like our, like physical building, like...
By creating this vision, this board vision, sort of idea of what we want to accomplish, have we sort of jumped ahead in this whole process? By just including a board and not, or is that like a relatively decent starting point? I mean, because it seems pretty broad to me and it seems like, you know, would have led down to smaller... I think there's a couple of, the last line that says, what do we want to be doing and accomplishing and having happen? Is very much from the VSA. You know, the VSA is, what do you want students to know? What do you want them to be able to do? What kind of experiences do you want them to have? What are the outcomes you want? It's just, it's just that kind of, well, what do you want?
Yeah.
The 2020 was put in partly from me, but really that attempt was, we're not looking at change and upset apple carts immediately. This isn't the usual like budget conversation where what we're talking about now is going to start happening next fall. It's trying to get a little further out so that if somebody has maybe a little bit of skin in the game, they're still able to participate in the conversation with us because there isn't an immediate change that's going to hit them. So, you know, but the rest of it is really, what do you think the vision will look like out in the future? Is really what the goal sets. It adds a few more things to tie into some past vocabulary that's been out in the CCSU. That vocabulary was hinted at for a facility idea. But you don't design a facility without knowing what you want to be doing inside of it. So I don't think we've locked ourselves in, except I want to feel, I want to make sure we all feel pretty locked in to the idea of pursuing visioning and strategic planning. I don't want to have too much wiggle room there because I think in just what has been described, I think it's just too much of a burden to put as a core responsibility to the day-to-day administration. I think, I mean, I think it is a burden that we uniquely can hold and it doesn't have, you know, and then we can interface and say, hey, is there a way that we can get some access to the teachers? Is there a way we can do this? Is there, you know, but we can be a little bit, or the core group can be the marshals of that.
Because I always look to administration to help with the visioning and the planning.
I can't imagine having a core planning team that didn't include administrators. They're a key constituent that would need to be at the table. So it's not done without them. It's just that it's not just them or just the board. I don't want anybody to feel on the spot. If you feel like you have more questions for me right now, I can stay and answer questions. But my guess is that I'm happy to absent myself so that you can have whatever kind of candid conversation you want to have because I know it's not a small decision. So I just soon leave it. If you have any further questions for me, ask them. And if not, I'll leave and you guys can talk. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Al says we're okay. Anybody think we're now okay? If not?
No, I think we've done, I've got enough information.
Oh, well.
Mary Jane, thank you for your time and helping to facilitate the process with us. It's, it's, it's very insightful and I do feel right now, a lot of us are sipping water from a fire hose, you know, and trying to figure out what the right thing is to do for our school, for our students, for our community. And want to make sure that we're giving this the proper focus that it, that it needs to do and not make a hurried rush to judgment on our decision as to which way we want to go. So...
You know, I think the other thing about the water from a fire hose, you know, I think I said this to you, Jack, and you're like, huh, that doesn't work. That the name of my company is Trifocal Consulting and I was very intentional about that name. My tagline is realize your vision. And it's very much because if there's anything I think I do pretty well, it's help people figure out kind of big picture, where do you want to go in a process plan? So that all the way along, you're feeling really supported in where you're trying to go. And I deal with minutia. I dot I's, I cross T's, I make sure things go well. Like that's a part of what I bring to the table is that kind of back and forth between details to make sure things go well and very concrete in my thinking to, but you have a place you want to go and I'll help you figure out how to do that in a way that you board feel fully supported in that work. So I don't doubt that after this, you're feeling like you're drinking water from a fire hose. It's a lot of information to take in and it is a big decision. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane.
And I think I'll pop this out.
Yeah, you can just pull that right out.
Yep.
Well, Mary Jane, before you go, I'm going to, again, do a little bit of a change-up here on our agenda because rather than talking about our annual meeting planning topic real quick, I just want to have a follow-up from our community and safety dialogue night that we had, of which Mary Jane was the facilitator, was a facilitator for that evening. And...
And Mary Jane, can I ask you before I forget? If that presentation is different than the one we've got in our org notes, could we maybe get a copy of that?
I, yes, absolutely. I will, I can either, I'll send it to Jack and Jack will get it to everybody else. Does that work?
That's absolutely fine.
And also, I sent to both Jack and Brian, it's, I don't know whether or not, actually looking at a final strategic plan from another school district just in terms of explaining the process, if you realize it isn't going to be just like that for your school, but having an exemplar of what it looks like, if that's useful, I'll include that. He's got that too.
I do have that. You know, we used it, it won't call us our team right away, but Brian and I had that information when we first met with Mary Jane back in February.
And again, understanding this is their school district, not yours, but it gives you a flavor of it. Okay, sure.
All right, so we're shifting gears here to the safety dialogue night. And Dr. DeWes?
Why don't I kick that off? Sure. Back in December, Superintendent Mark Andrews, Judy Tenova and I began some talks following the Sandy Hook tragedy on thinking forward to how we might best engage our community about issues involving public safety, including school safety. The planning committee grew to include Police Chief LaRose and the Community Justice Center Director Kate Grayden. And we realized we could use some help in really making this a purposeful, meaningful event. And Mary Jane Shelley came to our rescue and became our key consultant with that process. And for those of you able to attend tonight on February 20th? 20th, I think it was. You saw Mary Jane facilitating a really important evening. We had roughly plus or minus 90 folks there that evening, many of whom had affiliations with schools, municipal groups and so forth, but not all. And it was from many reports, including board members who were able to be there, a very important evening. An evening that started with some description of assets that our community has, which are unique. And I should have said the evening was hosted formally by the School Public Safety Committee, again, led by Chief LaRose. It seemed like a proper agency and group to really run this event or host this event. From there, there was really some table time, tables of eight to 10 folks, involved in some quality conversations led by some skill facilitators, addressing three key points. And that was looking into what folks thought were community safety factors, what folks' thoughts were about community safety and what some action items might be that could fall forward. And through the majesty of affinity groupings and blue sticky boards and so forth, we ended up with an awful lot of data that evening that was really quite remarkable to be collected in such a short period of time. And what you see before you are the top five for each of the three groups. And the numbers after them just reflect how many hits, if you will, there were for each of those themes. So these are the results, higher results. And by the way, we all did commit to collecting all the questions that folks had from that evening and reproducing those questions on a web presence and answering those questions. And that did occur by our agreed-on deadline of March 12th. And if you're curious to see what those look like, just jump on the Essex Police Department website and that's where you'll find the comprehensive set of Qs and As, including the school Qs and As as well. You will see among the school Qs and As, some things that really are less in Australia in nature and are really more board deliberative, quality conversations that really deserve some conversation at this and your fellow boards as well. But what you see fundamentally down below, among those action items, are conversations that we suggest really belong at the board level for the most part and deserve some conversation months ahead. So it was a very rewarding evening from my perspective, but I'd like to turn it over to others who were there that night to hear about your perspectives. Really did appreciate some board presence that evening. Thanks for those administrators and board members who were able to be there that evening.
I think what's important with it is the continued agendas that are being built. I think it would be for that committee to meet monthly is going to be based upon a lot of the work that was done that night. So really taking specificity to our community and moving forward. So, really taking specificity to our community and moving forward. And with the wide range of experience and intelligence from that collective group, not only from Essex, Vermont, New England, but nationwide. It's, it's got a lot of traction.
For the viewing audience, um, the five top action items were neighborhood involvement, followed by mental health, followed closely by family, parents and educators. The youth family involvement and coordinated family services. So, those are the five top themes. And it was heartening frankly to have folks really engage in conversations that saw the community as a whole. That saw schools as part of the broader community and really were able to have some, some very thoughtful and important conversations that evening. Mary Jane, what was your takeaway? This is sort of your first of this ilk.
Um, tried to make it as appreciative as we could with a very, you know, a, a kind of a tough topic to be able to, you know. But I think that um, with the help of the planning team, really we're able to keep it very focused on what's working well and what could we do even better. So, I, I really, I, I felt like people were very committed to that focus. I was just incredibly impressed by how on such short notice, how many community members came to this event. It was really impressive. Nine, you know, ninety some people, and this is a five week, uh, this is also Cindy. Who was able to do phenomenal, you know, outreach into the community to, to involve people. But um, you know, I think, you know, especially when I think about any kind of um, board strategic planning stuff. It's like you've got the community that's really commit, you know, they're committed to schools, they're committed to their towns. So, that just felt really heartening. I can imagine many towns having that conversation that you just wouldn't have had that much turnout on such a short amount of time. I also have not had the opportunity to work with police officers and um, administrators. And you know, just the group of the people that were on the, um, the, the, the planning committee. It was, you know, the camaraderie, the respect, the, the people willing to change their mind in terms of what the focus was gonna be. Because there was really some question around, is this about um, school safety? Or is it about community safety of which schools are an aspect of the community? So, you really saw the dialogue shifting and growing. And as you talked about it, the aperture changed from schools to community. And I just saw that happen in the, in the meeting. And I feel like that made all the difference to the kinds of conversations that happened that night. If you looked at the affinity diagram, I can't think of how many people came up to me and said, one person put one boat on guns. Like, it's not about that. So, you really changed the nature of the conversation. And I think people felt empowered, like this is something we can do something about. This isn't just our legislators that can do something about this. So, from my perspective, it was a, a great event and um, you know, from the process and the people who were involved in, in creating it. One of those tough act of follows, you said, you know, if you wanted to put my name out and other superintendents, like, I don't know, that'd be a tough act to follow.
You know, the reinforced Mary Jane was speaking about in the prior, prior agenda item, those sort of events don't just happen. They happen through a real commitment to planning. And Mary Jane was instrumental in really helping shepherd the uh, planning team through those processes. And you spent a good number of hours with us to result in, in that sort of event. So, thank you for your work with us.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Word of the night, appreciation.
Okay. Thank you.
You're good.
Thanks, thanks, Mary Jane.
You're welcome. And we'll send the information out to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night now.
Good night.
Jack, can I jump in real quickly for me?
Yes, sir.
Um, only because tonight's not getting any younger. You have an action item later on the agenda and that is the issuance of employment contracts. And I have them here tonight. And I know you haven't taken action on that yet, but each one of these pieces of paper need a board member's signature on them. So, if I'm able to just sort of divide and conquer this.
Divvy them up, absolutely.
I know it's for the action, but we'll get to the action. So, um, take some, best rest along. You see any post-it notes on there, just leave the post-it notes on there. You need a signature regardless of the post-it note, but please leave the post-it notes on there. But I mentioned leave the post-it notes on there, I meant to say it's actually in.
Right. Okay.
It's an excellent choice because they're wonderful cookies. I encourage you, nice choices there, Erin and the cookies.
My priority is to talk.
Our team needs to support the cookie choices tonight.
All right. Uh, next topic before I go raid the, the cookie jar. Is our planning for the two thousand thirteen annual meeting. And, and Judy, I don't know if this is one of your topics or Erin, you certainly, as communications team representative to U forty-six. Perhaps you can facilitate this discussion for the board tonight. Okay?
Sure. So, we had a communications planning team meeting with Michael Smith from the Prudential Committee and Gary and Erin from U forty-six. And I think there was really, the evolution of that team really has created some open and honest dialogue. And when we were looking at the trifold, folks really made sincere comments about, nobody reads something with this, with print that's this small. And it's too much information. And through the dialogue, um, an idea popped up to have an appointment card this year. And a copy of that is in your org notes tonight. And so, instead of having all that information in a trifold, you see a copy of what the appointment card is going to look like. And they've been printed and ready to go. They also talked about um, using Front Court Forum to post weekly tidbits about the budget. And little spurts of information instead of a, a mailing of a trifold. So, the combination of those two factors um, have led us to where we are now. And then because we have the benefit of having a Westford representative on the team as well, they designed and developed an exit card. So, Erin asked for a copy of that and that's in your org notes, an example, is in your org notes. And I think we're looking for direction on the board's thinking on that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we um, you know, I think last year we had the conversation as well. We wanna try to obviously make the, the annual meeting um, as informative and have it be as well attended. And get as much feedback as we can from um, the attendees. So, um, yes, one of the things that we did was we, the uh, community members who are used to having that trifold come every year in their mailbox. Will have, everybody should be watching for a postcard instead.
It looks like this. It looks something like this.
Yes, yes. So, just something a little different, a little more bulleted. Um, and we'll see, kinda see, you know, how that goes over. Um, and then one of the things we also talked about was, like Judy said, um, having a little questionnaire for people who do come to the meeting. So that we can try to get some feedback from the people that actually come, you know, as to um, what their thoughts are on the presentation, the content, how it's presented. Um, you know, the meeting itself, the location of the meeting. Um, so, in your org notes was a copy of what Westford had used for their annual meeting. And um, I guess I, I just wanted to, you know, see what you thought of that. Um, I think some of the questions are, are really gonna be useful for us. And um, you know, we might wanna put some things on here like a question as far as, uh, you know, what do you think of the location? What do you think of the format? Um, so, did you, did you guys have any thoughts on that at all or?
I, it was good, I tried to remember which one are we again, or do we have to empty out?
We're first.
Okay, so.
U forty-six is first.
We're six thirty. Okay, so that just, the, the trick there is our.
Yes, yes, we actually did.
We end up getting tighter, everybody has to leave.
Yeah, and I think we, we did talk about that. So, what we're gonna have is, I think we talked about having um, some kind of a minder or something. We're just gonna try to catch people, either put on their chair, right?
They were gonna put them on the chairs so when people come in, they already have it. But then there'll be a box on their way out. And then when they re-enter.
And maybe a table on the way out so that people can, you know, have a place right away to just do it as they exit. Might help.
That's a good idea.
And, you know, maybe even have a board member seated or standing by the exit, just saying, you know, did you have a chance to do the survey? Um, and the other thing we did talk about doing, doing also was um, maybe having some sort of a, a little thank you to them for filling it out. You know, we were gonna reach out, I had a couple of ideas for places we could reach out, maybe to get like a, you know, a coupon or, you know, for, for a local place. Where they could maybe get um, a coupon for like, I don't know, free cup of coffee or whatever it is. Um, to just be a little thank you to those people that do take the time to fill it out, so.
The, the, the one comment I'll have about the Westford questionnaire.
Mm-hmm.
That kinda caught my eye is, is, is questions two and three. I, I read those questions and I felt it almost presupposed that someone had made up their mind as whether they're gonna vote yes or no.
Right.
Whereas I would be curious in finding out, did this presentation tonight inform you enough to vote yea or nay? Not in, um, but that was, that was the only thing I would just say about the Westford questions.
Mm-hmm, right. I think it's also gonna be valuable to learn um, the way this community gets information, how about the school board's work. So, I did appreciate that question. And who's attending as far as people with children in the system are not.
Yep, so, you know, I would just say, if you, if you get a chance to look at it, you know, let us know if you think there's any questions that we should, we should include that maybe aren't on there now. I, my goal, I think, is to um, probably just come up with a draft for us. And then I'll make sure to send it out to everyone, just to see if, kinda get everybody's blessing on it.
You can ask an AI question. What do you value? Schools.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, quick study.
Extra credit.
Well, we're meeting tomorrow night, communications team. Um, barring any significant snowball. And uh, could probably finalize that and send it back out. Also, Julian Bradshaw is uh, going to provide some of the artwork that you see here for the annual meeting. Like we had last year to help set the environment. And as we mentioned earlier, Josh Paul from the Jazz Orchestra is going to be presenting. So, that'll be happening as people walk in to your present, you know, just before your presentation. We were not anticipating any food at this moment in time.
Oh, okay, no food.
And unless I hear differently or whatever your direction is. And the only other question I had is your thinking around um, moderator. Have you been in touch with anyone?
I have not, but I, I have some ideas of who I wanna approach. In fact, I just whispered in the superintendent's ear.
I'll hear it second.
And uh, so, so, so I, I recognize that it's, as board chairman, it's my responsibility to identify that moderator. And uh, we'll get that taken, get that taken care of. Okay?
Jack, what was the decision to not do any refreshments at all? I'm just thinking, we had them last year, plus we are in the cafeteria. Do you think we could at least do coffee and cookies? Doesn't have to be anything elaborate, but I think it might be nice. I'm just, what, what do other people think? Not so much?
I like the idea of refreshments, I think it's good.
Doesn't have to be anything fancy. Thanks for coming, you can at least have a cup of coffee and a cookie. Obviously, I'm a big fan of coffee.
Can I say?
I would certainly support having, you know, six course meal. Served by our professional hands. Okay, but, but you know, um, to, to have a bit of light refreshments, uh.
Yeah, I mean, people are coming out.
You know, uh.
Might be, you know. That's, that's just my thought, but.
But I tell you what, I will, I, I would defer to this topic to being addressed tomorrow evening at the communications team. And whatever communications decide is.
Okay.
I would, I would be fine with that. Remand that back there, okay?
Okay.
Anything else then on the annual meeting perhaps? Okay. Next, we have the Secretary of Education's guidance on school choice. Recall that.
Oh, I'm sorry, just, just to kinda, I may have missed it in my exuberance for a cookie. So, um, we have, we have sketched out that on the fifth of April at the annual meeting, we would inform our public, our community in attendance. On what our, what our plan going forward is, or at least an update on where we're going forward with visioning.
Yes, and, and so I, I need to backtrack a little bit. Recall U forty-six board members, we were in executive session on a matter this evening that's going to require some follow-on discussion. I would like to have a, a second topic be added and we can do this in open session when we have that continued executive session meeting. To talk about where we wanna go with, with strategic planning and everything. And that's something that needs to happen in the near term, uh, certainly before April fifth. So, if you're okay with that, that's, that's, that was kind of when I, when I heard the discussion going tonight, I'm thinking there are things we need to talk about. We can just dovetail that topic together.
The only tricky part with being first in the annual meeting.
Yes.
Is you must absolutely suspend the meeting in time for number two to start on time.
Absolutely.
Because they are warned a meeting to start. So, even if you somehow negotiated them to suspend and continue, but it does get a little tricky.
Right.
But.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you, Brian. Now, we'll talk about the Secretary's guidance on school choice. Dr. DeWes?
Just to set the stage, um, there had been very minimal school choice across Vermont for the past decade plus. In which every high school district was required to set up a school choice agreement with at least one other high school district for purposes of choice. And the law that had governed for the past decade plus will expire this June thirty. That particular law enabled school boards to either have children, students exercise choice to the agreed upon school with or without funding following the student. And you have had two or three agreements over time, one with Colchester for some of those years, one with South Burlington for all of those years. And in both cases, money did follow the students. So, that's been your history. It was required under law that, that school choice agreement be reset, recast, re-established each year. And that would be a function that this board would take on, normally run January each year, in which you would reauthorize that particular agreement. Well, that agreement did not foreshadow was the new change in law, which is in the process of taking effect and will formally take effect this July first. And that is that there's no limitation anymore for um, the nature of, 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 of the choice, only being one other choice region high school in our example, but statewide. So, that a student here or students elsewhere can elect any of these sixty-one public high schools across the land for purposes of choice and apply to those situations. You recall that part of your obligation this winter was to set caps both on the number of students that could in migrate and the number of students that you would allow to, to out migrate who wanted to exercise choice. So, you've taken on those, those functions. With the expiration of your current school choice grant with South Burlington, it had been our opinion that, that law no longer was in effect. This new law is in effect. Unfortunately, the legislature did not include any provisions for money to follow students. So, in this first wave of school choice, there would be no attachment of either ADM or of dollars that would follow students. So, that's something you've been aware, that's something we had lobbied for in the last legislative session and we were unsuccessful in doing so. So, now at the point of school choice being quite real for this, uh, this next fall. And Rob has been active with his fellow principals across the region and beginning to manage the pool of students that have made application during the month of February. And lending their thoughts on what their first, second or third choice of those schools would be. During the winter, South Burlington appealed to the Commission of Education or Guide, I'm sorry, Secretary of Education for Guidance. And particularly on the guidance of what should happen with pre-existing students who wish to stay on from the old choice agreements under this new environment. For whom money had followed them in the past. It had been our position that with the expiration of that agreement, that money would no longer follow students regardless of their future. In the same token, we had expectations that those students from Essex attending South Burlington who had not yet been tripped. Would be able to continue as preferential status for those students into the future. So, what you see in attachment ten is the Secretary's school choice guidance. So what you see, uh, in attachment ten is the secretary's school choice guidance issued to, uh, me and my colleagues in the Chittenden South District, the Burlington School District, and the, um, South Burlington School District. Missing, I think, frankly, is Chittenden East, but it's a whole other conversation. And in this example, we've come to learn that these are the only districts statewide for whom money has followed children in the past. So we're among the few, uh, who did attach, uh, the exchange of, of dollars with students under past choice agreements. So I don't need to read you, uh, the opinion, but I can certainly hit the high points. The first paragraph just speaks to, uh, law doesn't prohibit the payment question, but it seems unlikely schools will choose it, and that does seem to be the case. Second paragraph, um, is some conversation about constitutional law, and frankly, our attorney, uh, isn't in agreement with, with the assertions about constitutional law. The net of it is, um, that the secretary's opinion, which is just that, I might add, it's just an opinion, believes that, uh, districts are bound to continue payment for those students. And that, uh, that should be the case for the duration only for those pre-existing students finishing up their experience elsewhere.
It's pretty much-
Your attorney has looked at this, and your attorney feels that, given one critical absence in the past decade of school choice agreements that did not foreshadow this change in the law, and spoke specifically to, uh, what should happen at the point of separation or what should happen to those students in, with the advent of some new provision, some new law, which is the exact environment we're into, that he concurs with the secretary's recommendation that money should follow the students. So where we find ourselves, just so you understand the dynamic, is that we've got, uh, a list of students from Essex who are attending South Burlington. We've got some additional eighth graders, by the way, who have made application for next year, and South Burlington will make some decisions about their status. It doesn't appear that all those students will be able to get choice just based on the limited number of leftover seats. South Burlington is committed to continuing the education of your students there next year. So that is, I think, important news for you to understand.
In addition to their cap?
Uh, within their cap.
Interest.
Within their cap. Which leaves very few seats, perhaps as few as one or so left, for them to take on for additional students. One.
So they're, they're taking students in to count against their cap, but taking payments for those students?
That is their request. And that is the secretary's recommendation. So, we are in a situation with South Burlington right now where we do pay in arrears by three semesters for pre-existing students. So we'll still be paying into the near future with FY14 being the final payment for students who have been there through this year. What this foreshadows, and, and I, I must say, I disagree adamantly with the secretary's position that, uh, the other district counted on these tuition payments and that you counted on paying them within your budgets. Neither is accurate, in my opinion. Nonetheless, for these students to finish out their experience at South Burlington resulted in about eighteen semesters of time, which results in, um, nine student years, if you will, payable over the next four years. So that would be the forty-six obligation and burden if you, uh, if I can sense this, determine that was the right way to go on this. Am I properly confused anyone yet?
And there's no SB students currently enrolled?
Uh, I believe there's one. I believe there's one. Attending.
Do we charge them in arrears?
Uh, yes, we will, uh, yes, we do, yes, we do, in the same formula. Yep. Yep.
Pre-existing contract takes, should take precedence over law.
Well, yeah.
Because it's a, a, an agreement between two parties.
Problem is, yes and no. You know, my earlier take on it was that, that agreement's a one-year agreement, it expires at the end of one year. But, because on the same coin is, then what? Then what? Uh, and that's what the secretary lays, uh, sent to his guidance on this. So, um, it is important to know that students are not gonna be adversely affected by any sort of disagreement about this. That's, that's based on, uh, it's my assessment that South Burlington is doing the right thing by readmitting those students in the future. Um, and, uh, you know, it's a bitter pill to swallow, quite frankly, in terms of continuing to pay when the legislature hasn't found it within its heart to figure out. I don't think that's happened fairly across the state, but that's a different discussion for a different day. Uh, and it is my recommendation that we continue to pay our current obligation to South Burlington for four more years, resulting in nine student years for the two eighteen students.
Like I mentioned, I talked to Jack Potdis and Rob, there was a, uh, parent, certainly speaking for herself, believing she's speaking for others with the change of the systems.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and her belief, uh, as a taxpayer, she put it in certainly the same kind of concerns we have as a board, that we want the best interest of all students.
Yes.
She, although she agrees with the way that we are going with this, she's concerned that, 'cause usually, you know, transitions are kinda clunky, my words, not hers, that kids who would have benefited under the old program will now get, not get that benefit with the new system. And she could not be here tonight for various reasons, she was hoping maybe to come next time to discuss a heads up. Probably, as I understand it, is she's been looking for any leeway, is there any kind of alternative, um, interim solutions? If, if this is not going as smoothly as what the state had intended. Uh, she said that some, one of the deadlines weren't met that was supposed to have been met. So does that mean that during this little one-year growth process, is there a way, which I'm not sure if she would talk to either appeal to the board, the superintendent, or whoever, principals are involved, that there are any alternatives? Or is this, you know, the letter of law, we're just gonna cut it off here and, and, you know, do what, 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 as you were saying earlier, what the lawyer said you have to do. Uh, I'm not asking anybody to make any decisions, this is kind of a heads up that someone in my district was concerned about this. And again, her purpose was, you know, we want what is best for all students. Certainly, her child may not get the benefit that they could have gotten last year, as I understand it, but she wasn't just talking about her child, it was perhaps others that might be in that situation. Uh, I told her I would bring it up to you guys, um, just as kind of a heads up, and, and I'm not sure, frankly, what we can do about it, but just, um, I guess, just to bring it up for thought, if nothing else.
Sure, you know, I don't know her case, I don't know her situation. Do you think it's appropriate that she talk to the administrator? Um, Rob or we could certainly have a conversation with her. You're right with respect to the board and may not necessarily having the keys or tools to really address her, her interests. I'm not saying we do what we may. So I guess I would encourage you to have her talk with us and see if there's a conversation that's going on there. I, I would acknowledge that, you know, anytime a major program like this is underway, the first year is bound to be sort of a shakedown cruise and sort of get those wrinkles out of the way and so forth. I mean, I, I understand those pieces of it. That being said, every school board has had to declare its limits, and I don't know if limits are part of the conversation or not, but it's, uh, there, I, I can tell you certainty that I've spoken with leadership in the General Assembly on this topic this year, and, and, and they understand, um, the sort of bumps in the road that are occurring that deserves some further consideration and deserves to be further, further addressed.
So our current agreement says that for this school year, we'll send, is there, is this, is it student-specific? Or is it, have a specific number of students?
So with the current school year?
Yeah, so, so the, under the old status quo?
Yes.
The agreement would be for a specific set of students specified out? Like these four students are gonna attend South Burlington?
You want to address that, or, in terms of the limits each year?
Yeah, the limits are ten, we never hit the, we never hit the magic number.
Okay. And with the understanding that within those limits, the number of students and we'd pay X amount per student?
Yep.
Yeah.
For this school year?
Uh, for the school year, in a future school year, yes.
And a future school year?
In a future school year. We're paying a year.
Oh, right.
Paying this year for students of their last year, we'll pay an extra for students-
Right, but there's no assumption that that's, will continue for four years? That same number will be, because I mean, the student can then be like, you know what, I didn't like South Burlington last year.
Oh, yeah.
Well, there's, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of-
Students can move, yes.
So it's specific to the student, it's not a guaranteed number of seats, it is specific to the number of kids that are there at the time.
And, uh, so the secretary's assumption is that the intent of the legislature was to have that continue?
Uh, no.
At least will have us, I mean, it just seems crazy to me. 'Cause like, say there's four, say there's four students that wanna go, but they're different four students. Does that mean, is it specific to the students that are currently at the school?
In that example, yes, for the future, specific to the kids who are there now, have not yet been tricked. I mean, to the name, yes.
But I mean, if that was the intent, I don't know. That was the legislature's intent, then they wouldn't have changed it in the first place.
Yeah.
All right. Got it.
I, 'cause I read this, Mike, the, the, uh, secretary's, uh, opinion remains silent on what, what the value of that tuition is, right? So if, if his opinion is, is that the district, the, the sending district paid the tuition, would, would there be a value, you know, not, a not-to-exceed value? Or the rate, you know, the standard student rate for the, we'll reimburse you at a certain, at, at the statewide, what's, what's the term, Brian, and I'm forgetting, you know?
Statewide average.
Statewide average, okay. This is, I'm, I'm sorry, South Burlington, if you're tuitioning your students at twelve thousand dollars a year, we will reimburse you at the state average of eighty-seven hundred or whatever the right number is, okay? I, 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 I don't know if there's any, anything associated with that. I, I'm trying to think of ways that, you know, the same may be true for us for student, you know, students who may be coming into our district as well, but, um, I'm, I'm thinking if this is a, a commissioner for the state, we should deal with, with state tuition rates, not, not a, a local tuition rate. I, I, I don't know. I, I, I'm just offering that up, I don't know if it's, could be considered, but.
I've got a couple of options I can come to mind. One is, um, using the statewide average as the value each year for the next four years. I think another is to, uh, cap it at the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, start with the tuition rate, and pay that fixed rate into the next number of years.
Right.
I think those are a couple of ways to modify.
Or, or as both business managers would probably prefer, to having some kind of declining process, so that there's no cliff and no bubble.
They talked about-
Actually, yeah, that's exactly what current is plotted here.
But, um, I think in this, in the, in the sentiment of opportunities for kids, that these are counting against their one fifty-three cap or their, their school choice cap is, is problematic. I mean, for opportunities for eighth graders in EJ and nine, nine through eleventh graders in, in Essex, in Essex High School. I mean, it's problematic, it, it, it's suppressing the amount of school choice positions available in that district that, that aren't earnestly, you know, the concept of the cap was, money's not flowing, so we're gonna provide you a regulator, but it has to be at least this, but it doesn't have to be endless, knowing that there is a financial impact. Boy, it just seems like, it seems like kids are losing opportunity. These, these compensated students of choice, I think it's hard to believe that they would be in, you know, if, if the compensation has to flow, then you're saying that they aren't part of the current school choice legislation because of the compensation going with them. I can't believe that you should be-
Allowing those against the cap.
Yeah. Because there's absolutely somebody that's not getting into South Burlington High School if those kids are counting towards the cap.
Would you like to request an opinion of the secretary?
I, I guess what I'm trying to think of is, you know, how much is it, how much is it a true impact versus just a principled impact? I mean, can we, it seemed like there was some, um, there was some knowledge you had of eighth graders looking to apply to South Burlington?
Yes. Part of the process, yes.
Yeah. I mean, that, that, that becomes a real concrete thing, that we're not standing on some kind of falutin principle, but it just says, talking about all kids, here's one right here.
I don't know, to me, you just can't defend stupid, monolithic decisions. I mean, is anybody listening out there? I don't think so. That's just my opinion. Makes no sense.
I think there's a half of opinion here. I, I think, I, I feel like it, I'm not sure if it's our fight or the EJ school district's fight, but the other half of the opinion is to say, okay, okay, we're gonna go with previous agreements, compensation's gonna flow until those students aren't there. South Burlington steps up and beats big by saying, we're gonna honor the commitment for the four years until they graduate. That's great. But the other part of the opinion is them, them counting towards that cap is cutting, how many kids do we have over there? Five? Five Essex students that are in South Burlington?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that half their population that they're allowing next year? What's their cap, do we know?
It's, uh, thirty-seven.
Thirty?
My understanding is of last Friday, is there were twenty-two applications for one spot. That was on a principal call, phone call.
Well, there could be one spot left.
No.
Try it here.
Well, maybe we should reduce our cap. And that's an option for this board. We can reduce our cap from twenty to one until somebody fixes this problem.
Yeah, that just takes it away. I mean, that-
Well-
Punishes the last people.
Why should we penalize our taxpayers?
Well, uh, taxpayers have more franchisement than the students that we'd be preventing going to school here.
Okay. Glad you took that position.
As a school board member, yeah, by accident, I guess I do.
That's fine, but there are two concessions with here. That's not right. What's going on is not right.
So where I am, um, is understanding that, uh, one of our parents may be talking with us about some wrinkles in the system that have affected them or disaffected them. Second, I think I've got the sense of the board that, I understand the secretary's opinion and would look to me to arrange a structured, uh, payment for, only for those students, right? Who are there now, who will be continuing on. And lastly, to, uh, make appeals to South Burlington that, uh, for those students for whom they're being reimbursed in some way, shape, or form, uh, those students should not exclude other students within their cap. Do I have it?
Naturally, you, you're gonna publish a letter in the Essex Reporter to explain-
Only what?
We'll see to it that.
I have many thoughts going through my mind, but discretion being the better part of valor and also recognizing the, the time. Uh, is there any more questions on the, uh, guidance on school choice?
I'd just like to know what that, what your, I mean, I'd love to get an update about what your conversation with South Burlington sounds like.
By all means.
'Cause we've had, I mean, had similar conversations about what a rollover means in terms of contracts, and I'd like to see that happen. A real, a true one.
Understood.
In April, April 1st is when the lottery would take place.
What happened last Friday?
Lottery, right.
Done.
So the announcement of two students is April 1st.
By April 1st.
April 1st.
Then they have to April 15th to accept or decline in writing the school choice piece.
Real simple process.
And then in July 15th, they have the opportunity to opt out, just so you know.
Is it, Rob, is it? Is it premature, well, I'm asking the question anyway. How many, how many applicant, this board authorized twenty?
Yes.
How many applicants did we have for those twenty slots?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Possibly one more coming. Coming in.
Incoming, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other, uh, uh, school choice questions? And moving on then. We have a consent agenda this evening for approving warrants, approving, uh, that are, have made their way around the table. Uh, the, uh, meeting minutes of the 12th of January, uh, non-redoal of a contract, issuance of employment contracts that I'm trusting people have had a chance to sign, approve a donation, and act on requests for leave of absence.
Yeah, I need to modify, um- the consent agenda.
Modify, and a, and a modification on the consent agenda?
Three modifications I'm afraid. One is, would you please strike the non-renewal of contract that is no longer necessary?
Okay.
Non-renewal of contract. Second, Rob and Deb have finalized the reduction of force list, and these are necessary to execute tonight, so this list is coming around now. For your consideration, we need to add to the agenda tonight, so reductions in force. Check those are coming around. And one other add is the acceptance of resignation. Copies of that are coming around now. So what I've just done is asked you to delete the non-renewal contract, add reductions in force, and add accept or resignation.
I've only got two of these. Listen. I got one short, a short one.
Which one is that, the, the?
RIFs?
You have this one here.
You have that one, so it is another, a RIF one.
No, we're missing the resignation. We're short on the RISs.
If you need to.
Here. I've got a couple extra.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Excellent, thank you.
I think we also need to modify the request for leave of absence.
Judy, I can't believe that you said.
Modifying what way? Based on conditions?
Yeah, the, the number of the requests, or whether there's?
I'm on page five right now, the org notes. Are you all right?
Uh, actually, I was down in the materials, but I can be on. Okay, so I guess we, we end up.
Attachment 12 is recommended. Attachment 13 is recommended conditionally. Attachment 14 is not recommended.
Okay. Okay, so one action on the consent agenda has those three elements happen.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the modified consent agenda still includes approving the warrants, approving meeting minutes, striking the non-renewal, uh, non-renewal of the contract, issuance of employment contracts, acting on requests for leave of absence to be, to include, excuse me, there's no change on that, uh, but amended, there's a request for, an additional request for a resignation and also the approval of the RIF list. Does anyone want to strike anything?
I'd like to take the RIF list off.
Take the RIF list off, okay.
Just a clarification. Which one is of the list here of attachments is the strike contract non-renewal?
There is no attachment to it.
I, I don't know.
There's no attachment.
There is. I don't have anything in front of me. I don't know what.
We're striking it, I'm not.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's gone.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Okay. So, so with the RIF list being removed, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Moved, moved by Aaron. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to accept the consent agenda passed six, nothing. Now, onto the RIF list.
Yeah, I just wanted to get an understanding from administration. So this brings us, how does this work with? Like, what level are we thinking of? Does this bring us back down to FY 13 funding? Does it, does it protect us on a second vote failure? Does it, any of that kind of?
This is not second vote specific. These are, these are literal reductions in force that are not insurance risks, they're not budget sensitive, they're enrollment.
Student registration outcomes.
Oh, because we go, okay, that's helpful though.
Yeah. And actually, we're going to be continuing further discussion of sections tomorrow with the design team in the CCLs.
And did the budget, so the budget foresaw some additions in physical education, didn't it? Didn't we, we had the jobs money go down, but then we brought some back up? Is that?
We had, let's see if I can, 2.125 through the Education Jobs Fund last year for this current school year of hires. And as a result of that 2.125, there's a reduction in force of 1.125. And one will remain whole because we had a teacher for two, well, a teacher a few years ago retired and was not replaced.
Okay.
Which was contributing to the buildup.
Backlog.
Yes.
Okay.
So we didn't eliminate all of them. We saved one to meet the needs of the current student.
And we don't have that backlog anymore.
No.
Or we'll have enough to handle no backlog.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Okay. Any other questions then on the RIFs?
So there's no security RIFs that would be coming to us at some time?
Not an implied.
So do we have a motion then to accept the, the RIF list as, as described and reviewed? Brian, you want to make that motion?
Make that motion.
I'll, I'll, moved by Brian. I'll sec, second by Gary. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes six, nothing. So, uh, what agenda items should be calendared for future board meetings, noting that we are about an hour and 20 minutes past what our agenda was for tonight?
Next meeting would be our reorg meeting, which usually has a substance of work to be done. So it's typically
Yes.
that meeting has been a fairly lighter. One is it allows us any time in case something unanticipated happens, going through the beginning of next month, and then also the reorg process.
Also Carousel live, just to make things more festive.
So we'll be on horses going up and down.
Correct. Reaching for the brass ring. Also, we need to, and I just want to be clear, our future, we're talking about future board meetings, not our, when our board gets together for annual meeting, right? That's, that's a, a, a separate agenda topic. Mind you, our annual meeting is scheduled for Monday, the ninth, what is it?
Eighth.
Okay, Monday, the eighth, and then we have Carousel on Wednesday, the 10th, right? So it's going to be, and, and I'm trusting that everyone's going to be out to vote on Tuesday, the ninth. So it's going to be a busy week that week for us. But our, what I'm, we're talking about here is the meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 10th of April. Brian mentions the reorganization. Another topic that we U46 need to discuss then is a teacher appreciation and where we want to, where we want to go with that. We're quickly running out of runway as, as the year is progressing, and we, we should take some action on, on that as well. We did not do things this evening that we typically have done in the past. We did not have our principals' reports, although they're included in the org notes. I'll, I'll trust that if you have questions for either Principal Riordan or Director Travers and the data that they presented, you can, or might just email back directly and, and get responses back. We did not have, uh, the EHS attendance task team report for this evening. I also know that we have a full agenda scheduled for the Carousel that evening as well, right? So we'll have, um, training for, for all 16 of the governance team for that evening, right? And the theme that evening is?
Strategic planning communication.
Strategic planning communication, so I see that as our, as our, the, the two topics for U46 then for that evening, I see are board reorganization and teacher appreciation. Plus any immediate needs that the board needs to address as a result of, uh, the vote that happens on the day before. I'm, I'm trusting that it's going to be good news, but we need to be prepared if, for a contingency, if, if we have to take actions as a result of the, uh, of, of the board, of, of the vote, excuse me, so. Anything else that I'm missing? Okay. One thing before we go on to setting a special meeting, a little presentation. We have a certificate. 12 Years of Service Award. The Vermont School Boards Association presents this award to Al Bombardier in recognition of his dedication and exemplary service to Vermont children as a board member for the U46 Board. So Al, congratulations. Very much for your service.
Thank you.
Twelve's the magic numbers for the SBA.
High fives when you're having fun, eh?
And set special meeting. Is this our special meeting for the?
Not required at this point.
Not required. Our, oh, okay, understand, that's, however, uh, there, there is a need for a special meeting that, Dr. Deweze, unbeknownst to you, because you and I have not had a chance to talk yet. However, U46 knows that we, we came out of a previously, a run executive session this evening. There is a need to continue that executive session for, for the purpose of, uh, personnel matter. We also need to discuss per what we said in open session this evening, where we want to go with our strategic plan initiative. I would like to propose having a special meeting after I have a chance to discuss this further with you, Dr. Deweze,
Great.
on, on what's going to happen, and I want to do that in the next two business days or so.
Perfect.
So I can get the word out as to when we're, we're going to have this, uh, continued special meeting.
Thank you.
And after consulting with you.
Sure.
Okay? So we will handle that administratively, get that meeting properly worn. But again, it's something we want to try and do very quickly, okay?
Good.
Anything else? Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate all your work this evening. It's been a long night for all of us. Dr. Deweze, your staff too, you've had a long day today as well, and without further to do, I'll, conclude this, this meeting this evening at 10:45. Thank you.
Thank you, RGN.
Yes, thanks, RGN.